Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we're calling the meeting to order. And in so doing so, I have to give you a roll call of Troy Lassen to my right, myself, Jim Eckerbaching, clerk, and sitting as chair this evening. On Zoom, but not in the room, Nazir Al Palassi is our chair. He's on Zoom just in case we need him for a vote or information, but he's going to let us do our thing. He's stressing us, isn't he, Nazir? He can hear me, but he can't hear him.
Yes, can you hear me?
Jacob Morrison is also on Zoom, listening in. If we need him for a vote, he's available to us. And Veronica Semple will be walking in the door.
Excuse me?
Veronica Debonese.
I'm going to be in trouble.
Isn't that going to be happy?
That's coming.
Okay. And Veronica Debonese will be here, so when she walks in and sits down, I'll say something embarrassing. And first matter of business, approval of meeting minutes from 11:11, 2023. I have read the minutes. I haven't found any errors. If either of you gentlemen have found any errors.
No, I'm good.
Nope.
Okay, anybody online, are any of them raising their hand? John?
No, we're good.
We're good. Was that Nazir that said we're good? He's good.
Yes.
You're good, Naz. Okay. So if one of you guys will move to accept them, I'll sign them.
So moved.
So moved, do you have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of approving the minutes from 111, 2023? Say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we good.
And Nazir Al Palassi, aye.
Okay, thank you, Nazir. Approved and signed. Continued public hearings, Lat Street, 12 Lat Street, 2622, Dos Amigos. I know we have an attorney here for one side. Do we have the other side here? Did you want to ask for a continuance for somebody else to show up?
We only have four.
Pardon me?
Four. When's Veronica coming later?
Shortly.
So I think we'll continue because Mr. Al Palassi has recused from this one.
He is. But we got Jacob too. Jacob's here on Zoom.
Four out of four.
Oh, you want the five? You want to wait? Okay.
Yeah.
Go sit down.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. And so, public hearings, because I'm working as clerk and chair, I'm going to have to read this in, so bear with us. 123 Ronnie's Realty. You guys can come up. Yeah, you want to wait on that one too?
I'm waiting for my engineer, please.
Okay, so that'll go, you want that third or fourth?
Fourth.
Okay, so the other one just became third. And are you doing 223? 12 Great Neck?
No.
Ah, okay, 12 Great Neck. Pretty good when everybody hires the same attorney, huh? You feel like you got the wrong one now, or what?
I don't know. We'll find out.
So 12 Weight Neck, hang on, I got to read it in.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Feel free, sit down. Yep, you're coming up. Are you, are you, please sit down, be comfortable. Are you guys enemies? Sit on either end of the table.
It's like my skin, I don't know.
And here's Veronica. Okay. So we got 12 Great Neck. 12 Great Neck.
Evening, Veronica.
Some space for you. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on February 8th, 2023 at 6:80 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 2-23 for an appeal of building inspector notice of violation from the requirements of Mass. general law, Chapter 40A, subsection 15, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Linell Butterfield and Peace for Ponies care of Craig Hartwell, Esquire, of 200 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., for the property located at 12 Great Neck Road, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Wareham Assessors Map 17, lot 1008, in the R30 zoning district. Who is the person appealing the building inspector's notice of violation? You are.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir. Your name, we need your name and address.
Of course. My name is Craig Hartwell. I'm an attorney with the Law Office of Jessica Clark on Main Street here in Wareham. I'm here on behalf of the owners and operators of 12 Great Neck Road, also known as Peace for Ponies. And we're here in, to appeal the notice of violation from the building inspector for a violation of the 2012 special permit which allowed for the additional use of the property as a veterinary hospital.
Okay. I had the opportunity to read your entire answer earlier, brief, whatever.
Thank you, sir.
Do you care to read it or state it into the record, or you want to just?
Well, it's been entered into the record. I'm happy to read it again if it would help the board to go through some of the factual background and history of it.
I think it would, because I'm not sure that everybody's had the chance to read it. We've got two members out of, one out of state, one out of country, listening on Zoom, so.
Then allow me to go through it for you, sir.
Please.
This appeal is concerning the property at 12 Great Neck Road here in Wareham. The property is located on the Assessors Map 17, lot 108, 1008, and is in the R30 zoning district. In addition to the agricultural uses allowed by right in the R30 zoning district, on December 26, 2012, the town of Wareham Board of Appeals issued a decision to grant a special permit under the use definition, section 352, animal-related uses, veterinary hospital specifically, and further with the following conditions, that they not exceed three animals at any one time, and obviously the approval of other partner boards, committees, and commissions. Fast forward to 2022, in August, on the 24th, the building commissioner sent his first notice of violation. This was followed up on September 22nd with another revised notice of violation, at which time the building commissioner gave the applicant here 180 days to cure any defects in the property. That was then rescinded and overruled by the building commissioner's third notice of violation on November 21st of 2022, where he has rescinded his prior letter stating that there had been no effort, in his opinion, to reduce the infraction, but it seems that the operation is expanding at 12 Great Neck Road regardless of any progress of permitting uses to the land in the rear of the property. On December 14th, I ended up meeting with Mr. Turner, the building commissioner, to explain the current state of the conditions of the property, as well as the uses allowed by right in the zoning district. He stated at the time that he hadn't been to the property, but he would get back to me. I followed up with him again on the 20th. He said that the activities on the property did not meet his definition of agricultural uses, that I would have to file this appeal. And so this appeal is subsequently followed.
Okay. So usually, you come in to us, we let whoever is making an appeal say their thing, we all ask questions, we open it up to the public. In this instance, I believe you're appealing a notice of violation, so that would be the building commissioner?
Yes. According to law, the building commissioner has the burden of proof for any appeal.
Okay. So I have a lady sitting over here that I know wants to ask for us to continue because she feels that she's the, you know, and puts me in an awkward position because, you know, we had 30 days' notice. Everybody knew. I know very well, because I was at the bubbler and I overheard it, you know, that scuttle button. She wants to have an attorney to come in and give an argument, and her attorney's not here. Am I right?
He was unable to attend this meeting.
Okay.
His name is Dan Walsh.
But we didn't get any letter from any attorney. I don't know if you hired him 30 days ago or 30 minutes ago.
I hired him two years ago.
So.
He couldn't, he asked me to.
Time out. We need to have her state her name and her address.
Thank you.
My name is Joan Cooney. I live at 14 and 16 Great Neck Road, and I do have an attorney, his name is Dan Walsh. He asked, he told me he could have sent a letter today, however, I was unable to get it through my job situation, and I really would like to ask for a continuance for another hearing, for another date.
I'm not sure of legality about what I'm about to say, but I really don't think we have any reason to grant that, personally. I'll let the rest of the board comment on it.
I agree.
Go ahead.
I agree, Jacob Morrison.
Our normal process is, there's an appeal, and the appealing party comes up and states their case. I've let him state his case, and then I interrupted him. It's really still in that point. After we've heard the appealing case, we let the other party speak sometimes, we listen to the board, and then we open it up to the public. And when we open it up to the public, that's when you'd have the opportunity to come up and speak, or your attorney. So I've really extended you quite a bit of courtesy at this point. So at this point, I think in all propriety, the best thing for me to do is go ahead and let any of the board members have any questions of the person appealing the notice of violation. The board can talk amongst themselves, and we'll probably want to give you a chance to continue. We'll probably want to do that. I'm getting a text message from our chair saying, you know, give him a chance. Give him a chance to hear both sides of it, but.
I'm a little bit confused on why they got the violation in the first time, if they got granted in 2012, and now, and now all of a sudden, you know, they're going, I've been to that place personally. It's a really good thing for this town and for the animals over there, so I don't really see, all of a sudden, now they're getting violations, and they've been running this for many years, so. Just my thought.
I hear you, Jacob. I hear you, and don't, be willing to speak up again if we need you. That was Jacob Morrison that spoke. He's a member of the board. So at this point, before I even let you go any further, or you go any further, any questions from any members of the board?
I don't have any right now.
I do.
Go ahead.
So you mentioned that, I think I saw very briefly, because I'm just trying to get up to speed on what's going on. So there is a comment that you made of by right. So I would like to distinguish what's by right and what's by special permit, and I imagine those two are combined, and was that something that you were saying, you by right had certain animals?
Actually, if you don't mind, Veronica, I'm going to, I'm going to let him answer you, but I'm going to, I had the advantage of reading. I spent half my day on this and other, just to be ready for tonight, because I knew our chairman wasn't going to be here. So I looked it up in the bylaws. If you look up agricultural uses, it's a Y. For under five acres or for over five acres, it's a Y. There's no restriction on the number of animals. They do mention a few animals in specific, but there's no, as I looked at everything, after, when I first looked at this, I said, why are we even here? Why is there a complaint? Why did our commissioner? So then I read the commissioners', and I actually had the benefit of talking with the commissioner today. And the argument came back, well, they were granted a special permit for veterinary hospital. That does require SBZ, Special Permit Zoning Board of Appeals. The applicant is saying, we don't have a veterinary hospital. We were granted a permit for one, but we don't have one. So.
Just to clarify, we're not saying we don't necessarily have one or have the right to have one, but we don't have one, we don't have a building used for the treatment and diagnosis of animals right now that has more than three animals within it.
Okay.
And that is what the special permit allowed, and that's what the violation is specifically for, is the violation of the special permit, not for the uses allowed by right in the district. We are arguing that the agricultural uses are allowed by right in the district, because that's what your zoning bylaws say, and that's the current state of the law. Specifically to the 2012 special permit, that allowed for the additional use of the property, to allow for a structure on the property, and your bylaw actually defines what a veterinary hospital is, is a structure or building used for the treatment and diagnosis of non-humans, I believe is how they refer to it as. So that's an additional use to the as right uses that are already present on the property within that R30 zoning district. So we're just asking for clarification on what those conditions are for the special permit and what is also allowed by right in the district moving forward.
Okay. And you haven't gone to the commissioner to ask this question, or you just?
I specifically did twice. I sent, I actually sent him the brief that you have in your file ahead of time. I sent that to him in the middle of December. And then, as I mentioned in there, I followed up with him again, and he said, file the appeal. So I filed the appeal. I've been doing this for a while. I'm on the zoning board in my town. I've rewritten the bylaws in my town. There seems to be a misunderstanding.
May I?
So.
Please.
So the special permit was for horses?
No.
No. It's for a veterinary hospital.
And when did the hospital was supposed to go in?
This was 2012.
And has it gone in?
No. There's no building currently used for a veterinary hospital.
So if there was somebody, if you got granted the special permit, I'm just confused why it wasn't followed through on your client's end. So you got a special permit, you just, you don't put the hospital in?
Because it is a veterinary.
I'm just confused. Why didn't it go in?
Do you need to talk to?
I guess I'm not discussing what happened in 2012, or 2013, or 14, or 15, or 16, or 17, or 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. I'm trying to get us into 2023 and what is currently on the site right now, which is what the violation is for, not for what we did back in 2012.
Okay.
So I guess that the burden is on the building commissioner to show where the violation is, and he hasn't shown us where the violation is.
I thought I just read that there's no building for.
That has three, that has more than three animals in it.
The special permit granted them the permission to run a veterinary building.
I got that.
With up to three horses, or three animals.
So the animals showed up, but there was no hospital? See, I'm confused. I keep hearing veterinary hospital, excuse me, but I don't hear that there is one, so isn't that a void if you're not, if you go for a special permit and you don't follow through on an end? Isn't that a violation, or is that not a violation?
If it's not a violation, if you get a special permit or a variance, you have a certain amount of time to use it. If you don't use it.
And those are specific differences, too. A variance, you have one year before it lapses, and there are specific rules that you have to follow in order to exercise that variance. There's no exercise requirement for a special permit. The special permit stays with you for as long as.
Runs with the property.
Right. So I mean, the variance you have to exercise, I have not seen case law that says you have to exercise the special permit, but I welcome any information about that.
Thank you.
Jacob, I know you seemed interested. Do you have any comments that you want to make, questions?
Yeah, I just, I'm just not sure why, really, this has been brought to this. It's been there for a lot of years. Like I said, I've been there. I see all the good work that they do there. So now to have this company having their, yeah, I think it's a little ridiculous on our part, to be honest with you, in my opinion.
So just to add a question, ask a question to our board member, Jacob.
Go ahead.
If they've been there doing great work, what work are they doing with no veterinary hospital? Is it just a care facility?
Oh, they're saving ponies, people that need their animals taken care of, or fostered, or need a home to rehab a pony, or something like that. It's a great thing they have going on over there. It's not, it's not, you know, a lot of the money's donated. People donate their own time to go there and help. So it's not this big money thing or anything like that. It's a small little operation over there, and I'm just kind of mind-blown that this is going through right now.
Thank you.
Nazir, do you have anything you'd like to say? I see your hand up.
Yeah, hi, Nazir Al Palassi. I think we should give the chance for that neighbor, she mentions her attorney. I don't think we should go any further without her attorney present. Has to be presence and be able to defend her, or her or her family, and we should continue. We, I mean, I suggest we continue it until she has her attorney next time. Maybe he has something else to say, and once she mentioned attorney, we have, by law, we have to listen to our attorney.
She's.
We cannot deny, we can't deny that.
Well, I'm not, I think that's what I said originally, Nazir, and I'm going to, I'm going to let the applicant respond, or the applicant's attorney respond.
She has not demonstrated that she's an aggrieved party. This is, this is an appeal of the building commissioner, not an appeal from a butter.
I understand, that's why.
So the building commissioner is the one that has the burden of proof here to make the case, not a butters attorney who hasn't even filed an appearance or shown any interest in participating at this advertised public hearing. So I would be, I would be reluctant to go along with the continuance without any showing of grounds for that.
She's, if I may.
That is from the building commissioner, and we haven't even heard from him.
Nazir, do you have anything else that you want?
Yeah. If I may, she is a direct abbot. She has the right to complain, and she was served, I'm very sure she was served, with a notice, so.
That's, that's the point.
She has all the right to object, especially when she mentioned, counselor, you know that, she mentioned she has an attorney. We have to listen to her. We can't deny that, right?
Look, I don't mean to speak over you, Nazir, but what's happening here is, if and when we get to the portion of this hearing where we said, okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this matter, that would be when the appropriate time for this woman to come up and say, yes, I'm a member of the public, and I'd like to speak on this matter, and I wanted to hire an attorney to speak for me, but he couldn't be here tonight. Would you continue for me? Would you give me the courtesy of a continuance? We haven't got to that point yet. And then it'll be up to the board to say whether or not we want to give them the courtesy of a continuance, say, no, it's been advertised, she said two years ago, she hired this attorney. For two years, he's known that this train was on the track, and here we are tonight, and the building commissioner is not here, the applicant is here, and somebody's actually speaking out of turn, asking us to kick this can down the road. So that's why I'm uncomfortable with it. So that said, anybody else from the board have any questions? Any further questions? Okay.
I do.
You go ahead, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
What is a stable as it relates to what they are allowed to do? Is that the hospital? Because we're talking about, there's too many animals in the stable, is that what is considered the hospital, which is why they're over the number that was allowed?
Who are you asking?
Anybody that knows?
Well, the building commissioner would be the one that wrote that violation, and he's not here to present evidence to that effect, so.
Well, whether, evidence as in whether there were too many animals, or what the building is?
All of the above. Where, the building commissioner has to show us where the violation is. I can't find you a violation. He has to tell us where he saw the violation occurring.
Did you read the building commissioner's letter?
I did. I did.
I just like, if we need more time, why doesn't, why can't we grant a?
We may get there. We're just not there yet. Nobody's asked for a continuance in the proper, so are you done with questions? I don't want to go ahead and open it to the public, you know, ask for public comment until I'm letting the.
I think so. I only have a question for you.
So anybody here in the room tonight or on Zoom, in the public, that would like to speak this, to this matter in favor of the applicant, and the applicant being, appealing the decision that there's a violation, appealing the violation, the notice of violation? Is anybody here that would like to speak? Okay, is anybody here opposed, in favor or opposed, that wants to have anything to say at all from the public? And that would include you?
That would be me?
That would be your opportunity to get up and say your name and put it into the microphone.
My name is Joan Cooney.
You can, you don't have to, yeah, I just.
She has never complied to a single thing on that special permit from day one. She's had more animals, she's had up to eight animals, and the only reason why it has never come to this board or anybody else's attention is because out of the goodness of my heart, I never said anything because she was doing good things for the animals. However, when you have an extremely small piece of property, and you have that many animals, the manure, the smell, the urine, the mice.
I'm going to interrupt you for a minute.
All of those things.
I'm going to interrupt you for a minute.
Yep.
Instead of saying that many animals, could you tell me how many animals are there?
Right this minute, today? Or as many, she has right now, she has four donkeys, she has a pig, she has a flock of chickens. So there's quite a few animals, more than there should be with Paul Turner and the zoning board has allowed. She continues to have more, she gets rid of some, more come right away. She can comply and get down to the two animals, the three animals, but she chooses not to. She chooses to do whatever she wants.
Okay, I think that, because I spent some time on this, I think that there's a misunderstanding here, and I'm going to offer you a copy of the zoning bylaws to look at, and I'm going to invite you to walk up to the table for a minute here, if you don't mind. And can you see where it says principal use here?
Correct.
And you see how it goes across, and it says MR30, you're in the MR30 zone, correct?
No, R30, sir.
R30, I'm sorry, R30 zone, correct?
I see that.
Okay. And it says here, agricultural uses upon tracks less than five acres. That would be dispossible, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and what does that say there? What's that letter?
It's a Y.
A Y, what does that mean? It means yes.
Okay.
Okay, so so far, everything you said, she's allowed to do. Everything you said that she hasn't complied with, there's no bylaw, you can go ahead and sit down again. There is no bylaw that she has to comply with. She's in compliance, she's allowed to have the animals there.
As many as she wants?
There's nothing in here that limits the number of animals.
Okay.
There was a special permit that was granted for a veterinary hospital, and that was limited to three animals. The complaint is that she's running a veterinary hospital with more than three animals. The applicant is saying, we're not running a veterinary hospital, we're not, we're not using the special permit, and the number three doesn't apply because we don't have a veterinary hospital. They're basically saying that, you know, this board could make the decision to rescind the special permit, but that still wouldn't change her right to have the animals there.
Correct. I just wish that my lawyer was here to represent me, or he was unable to. And that's all I can really say.
Okay.
She has a lawyer, I have one.
Anybody else from the, from the public here that would like to be heard? Would you like, as a person from, you're putting, would you mind sitting back down, let them, come on up, the hand wavers, come on up, name and address, speak into the microphone.
Hi, my name is Deb Hickey, and I live at 4 Cabo Verde Way in Wareham. I just need to comment because when Ms. Cooney was saying that the manure smell, the urine smell, and all that type of thing, I volunteer at Peace for Ponies, and we keep that place immaculate. And we're getting in rescue animals that are from horrid, horrid situations, so why would we ever keep them in a dirty, filthy place? We go above and beyond to make them comfortable, to give them what they need, nourishment, healing, and so I.
Healing, does that mean you guys are doing, you know, veterinary work there?
Not diagnosing, they're not diagnosing or treating animals.
No, like spiritual.
Okay.
So I just had to say that because that is so far from the truth.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to speak now, that one person was brave enough to put their hand up? Go ahead, I see another way. I know you're not waving at me, I think you see it. Okay.
My name is Stephanie O'Leary. I live at 675 Plymouth Street in Middleborough.
Okay.
I have.
In Middleborough?
Yes. I have two of Kendra's animals that were pulled out of a slaughter pen at three months old and left there without their parent, their mother was taken and sent on a truck on a truck to be slaughtered. So what she does is she takes these babies that barely can even eat on their own because they haven't, they've been nursing their whole time and she rehabs them and then finds homes for them by six months old. So I have had my two since they were six months old, but they wouldn't be here if Kendra doesn't do what she does for the animals.
Thank you. Anybody else that wants to wave at me or speak?
Could I say one more thing?
Oh, you absolutely can come back and make another comment, we didn't have it exclude you from.
Can I just show you some evidence?
You want to give us something that we can put in the file and keep in the file?
Correct.
Bring it up.
When I was talking about manure, it's not that they don't keep the animals.
Please go back to the microphone, just so that it gets, everything, we want to make sure everything gets recorded, that's all.
I'm not talking about not taking care of the animals, they take wonderful care of the animals. The picture that you're looking at is a small portion. One day I saw a gentleman take 85 bags of manure that was, that was stacked up on the property waiting to go. I stood and counted every one of them. I have other pictures of the gentleman putting them in his truck, pounding them down with his feet and to put them in there to take them away.
That's, you know, I could.
It's a lot, a lot of manure.
I've heard that statement about something being a lot of manure before myself. So that it's being hauled away, I don't know, maybe.
It's being hauled away, but at times it gets a little bit excessive when you have that many animals.
I know I'm really biting my tongue because you guys have given me so many opportunities to make so many comments, but nonetheless, are you asking for a continuance? Are you asking this board to consider a continuance so that you can present a different argument or is that the extent of your argument?
I'm asking for a continuance so I could have another argument with, here with my lawyer.
Okay, is that it for your comments?
For today, yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you for your, thank you for your input. I wish the building commissioner were here to defend his notice of violation, but he's not. Do I have any motions from the board? Any, wait a minute, you're waving at me again.
I know. Can we all see that picture? Can you put it on screen or put it around?
Can I see it?
Can I?
Absolutely.
Not that I think it's relevant to discussion.
Anybody that wants to see it, come on, in a single file, come, come, come on up, take a look and then go sit down. I don't want any comments. If you want to see it, come look at it.
So while they're looking at the pictures, I'm going down, we got agricultural use, which is R 30 is yes, but I hear there's a pig there. Is this considered a piggery? Can you have a pig? That's, that's different.
Piggery has a minimum requirement for number of pigs before it reaches the piggery status. According to your bylaws, you'll see, you need at least three, I believe.
But I'm confused between agricultural and animals. Agricultural is growing foods and?
No, that's not true, actually. Agriculture includes the raising of animals as well, according to state law.
And do you want, do you want to see these?
That would be great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Just for the record, go ahead, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Richard, I just kept things moving forward.
That's fine, I'm just asking questions.
No, no, and as a matter of fact, I had the same question, so I actually looked, looked it up and I, I believe, I don't know if it was in the attorney's response.
I just want to say that we didn't get the agenda sent to us, I didn't have the time to overlook it.
It was online. That's how I got it.
I said that I didn't get the agenda posted to me.
Okay.
To find out what was going on and I didn't have the time to go over it as serious as you did. So I apologize for that.
No, no, no.
I didn't have the day to sit around and do that, so.
Would you like more time?
I would love more time.
But I hope I get a motion for a continuance out of a board member before we close this hearing this evening. Almost like we've been hinting at that for 15 minutes now.
I make a motion to continue.
I had a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to continue and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 It seems like you've been adamantly continued, sir. Can you come back in two weeks?
Are you asking for my consent to continue? Yes.
No.
Yes. We'll be happy to come back in two weeks if that's what the board wishes.
I want to continue, but I don't want to continue to a date that you can't be here and then I want.
I will be here whatever date you need me to be here. I just, can the board give us a little guidance on what other information that we can provide to them that we haven't provided?
I believe the next meeting is the 22nd of this month. For everybody in the room, that's in the room for this matter, there'll be no further notices, there'll be no more letters in the mail, they'll, you know, it's, you're here tonight, you're listening, we're continuing until the 22nd.
Mr. Chair, Nazzy would like to say?
Nazzy's, I'm sorry, Nazzy, go ahead.
Yeah, hi. Again, we should get a clarification from the commissioner on the violation, so it's clear. And the neighbor, make sure next time she has her attorney, so she could have her argument that she wishes for and we go from there. And yeah, 22nd, I guess is good, if they can, if both attorneys could be here.
And this is, this is, excuse me, this is 2-23. And everybody was here. So we're gonna continue this until the 23rd. Nazzy, while you were speaking, the woman that was, Mrs. Cooney was talking to somebody in the audience, she might have missed you, do you want to say it again?
It's, first of all, the 22nd, it's the 22nd, not the 23rd. Jimmy, you said the 23rd.
2-23 is the confusing part, sorry. 223 is the application number, the date that we're coming back is 2-22.
Okay, all right, no, I was just saying that it's only fair that she would, and fair and right to be heard with her attorney and just we could just kind of make sure her attorney can make it as well as the, as the, as the attorney present. Also, we should get a clarification from the commissioner on the violation.
I think we should invite the commissioner to be here.
It's not clear. We need some clarification, so everybody is at peace with the decision and very clear.
Okay. I think, I think that the, we have the benefit of Sonia being here this evening and she just gave me the high sign, I think she's gonna try to get the commissioner here, Naz.
Okay.
Okay, so we're continued, thank you for your testimony. Thank you very much. Time, sir, and we'll see you on the 22nd. Anybody got anything on this they want to hand back to me for the folder? You guys got a couple things there that you, you want to keep them?
I'm, I'm gonna hang on to mine.
You're gonna hang on, you want to hang on to your?
No, I'm good.
I just, if they're not gonna go in the folder, I like to. That left us, that continued to, so Colin McNay, you'd be next in order, 3-23, 31 Warren Point Road, map 32 lot 10006. I'm gonna ask you to sit there while I read it into the record for a minute, but that way you can get, I don't want the seat to cool off. Thank you. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on February 8th, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 123 for a special permit from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Ronnie's Realty LLC, care of GAF Engineering, Inc. of 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing construction of a 1,800 square foot, two bay motor vehicle service garage located at 3178 Cranberry Highway.
I think you're reading the wrong one.
Wrong one.
I'm reading the wrong one, well, we can, we can be real happy that this got read in. Thank you, 1-23. What, what one are you?
We're 3-23. Colin McNay.
Colin, sorry, Colin. Let me get the right one.
Is 1-23 not present?
Colin McNay, 3-. They're here, but they want, they, early, early in the meeting, they asked for us to take as much time as we possibly could and let them be last because they weren't ready. Is that what we're doing? Are we taking enough time?
Apparently not yet.
Apparently not yet, oh, okay. Starting again, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on February 8th, 2023 at 6:30 PM in room 320 at Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition 3-23 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Section 625, Note 2, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Colin McNay, care of James W. Marsh of 128 Union Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a sports court located at 31 Warren Point Road, Wareham, Mass., assesses map 32 lot 10006 in the R 60 zoning district. And I just proved that I don't listen to what I read. Here you go.
For the record, Jim Marsh, Law Offices of James W. Marsh, 128 Union Street, Nibbadford, Massachusetts. I have some additional site plans if anyone needs.
I think we got one at the back of each of our, under the paper clip in the very back, there's a, there's a folded up plan.
11/23/22 is the date on this?
Go ahead.
So as you stated, we're seeking a variance from zoning Article 6, Section 625 because you'll see that the proposed site of this paddle ball facility is forward of the single family home that's located on the property. This is an accessory structure, therefore it needs to be equal to or rear of the setback for the single family home.
So just so, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, just so that we don't get lost in your presentation, on the plan we're looking at, it's labeled proposed 14-foot by 20-foot hut, is that it?
This square.
Or is it the whole thing?
It's the whole.
Proposed court elevation, elevated on concrete piers?
Correct, so what it is.
Okay, so it's everything?
It's everything, it's an elevated court.
Okay.
It's, it's, you can see that there'll be a deck that.
Go ahead, sorry to interrupt.
There's a deck that encompasses the court on two sides and then there's a proposed hut, a warming hut. Apparently paddle ball is typically played in the winter time, so there's a warming hut that usually is constructed at the facility. So like I said, this, this is in front of the single family home front setback. It is behind what is the setback for this district, which is 60 feet, but again, it's accessory structure, so it needs to be either equal to or to the rear of the single family home on the property. The problem we have here is, and maybe you've been to the site, is as you get to the home, the slope of the property starts to really drop down to the, down to the ocean. So to really put this facility in at that location would be a hardship, it would be an economic hardship, you know, you could say it would be impractical and it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to be in that location as well where there's already an existing tennis court. It's been there since, I think, 1985. So it fits really well into this sort of sports design theme complex, having it next to the existing tennis court. So it's really an issue of a topography as to why we're looking to have the facility in the location that's shown on the plan, along with the fact that it makes sense to have it next to the tennis court.
Did I just hear somebody speaking or was it phone or something? Okay. Sorry, I just, I heard something that was distracting. An approximately 40. So it's called, it's a, it's a sports facility?
It's, it's a paddle ball court, I don't know if you've ever played paddle ball.
Is it like tennis, but with a table tennis racket?
It's a smaller court, yeah, it's similar to tennis, a little bigger than.
But you use a smaller racket?
A little bigger than pickleball or.
Pickleball.
It's a little larger than that.
Yeah. I've heard about pickleball, pickleball too.
It's all the rave.
Yeah. So is this for the community or just for this one residence?
Just for this one residence.
For this one residence. And, and they're on a seven acre pass, seven, almost eight acre parcel? Can you tell me what's across the street on Warren Point Road? Is there another residence over there or do you know?
I, directly across, I, I don't recall seeing a home. Some of these, like you just mentioned, the lots are good size. I don't, I, when I've been to the property, and it's only been a few times, I don't recall seeing a home across the street, directly across the street.
I know, Warren Point is a rather unique part of Wareham. I mean, most of the people in Wareham, or many of the people in Wareham have probably never been out there. It's, you know, it's very private area.
It's isolated.
Yeah. So did you have anything else that you wanted to offer us in your, in your presentation before I open it up to the board to?
I, I know that there's, there hasn't been any neighbors complain about the, the existing tennis court that's been there for more than, since 85, so we're talking many years. And I, I think there's other courts like this that are in that neighborhood, so it sort of fits into the character of the neighborhood, this type of use. And as I mentioned to you, I know it's a big lot, but because of the location of the single family home, it really restricts us putting it in the front of the lot. The, the home's really towards the rear and where you get to the, the home, the slope of the, the property really drops. So to put an elevated paddle board, sorry, paddle ball court would really be difficult to put in there, along with.
What's that? The balls would be going into the water.
That, and then you're dealing with the coastal bank and, you know, that's.
Yeah, I get it.
Issues with the conservation.
So I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, the square in the, that shows the whole lot.
Yep.
And I see the house and I see where this is gonna go and I see down on the waterfront here. Oh, look at that, okay.
We're just looking on Google Maps to get an aerial view of the property.
I've driven out there before and I never saw any of the no trespassing signs, so I kept going.
I believe you went by him.
And my memory is that this area, a lot of the houses, they're set in, it's very heavily treeed out on, on Warren Point Road. You almost can't see the houses, but down the road you go and if you look hard enough, they're there. It's a pretty nice area of town. Any questions from the board members on Zoom or sitting here? I'm not gonna pick on anybody in particular.
I don't have any questions, I, I think, I think it kind of makes sense to have it near the tennis court because the tennis court's there and, and I get why they want to put it there.
I, I get why they want to put it there. I get that when they write bylaws, they write them for, to try to fit most situations, but because they can't, they create this thing called a board of appeals. Who's got their hand up? Go ahead, Nazzy.
Yes, Nazzy Alcolasi again. I, I think it definitely meets the statute requirement of variance. It is unique and it does not derogate from the intent of the bylaw and also it's definitely a hardship because of the topographic nature of the land, so it's definitely meets the statute requirement.
I think I agree with you. All right, so because there's nobody else, nobody else has their hand up, John? Okay. Because nobody from the board is jumping out of their chair and screaming and saying they've got something to ask, anybody from the community here that wants to speak on this matter, either for or against? Is anybody from the community that's here for this matter other than the attorney representing the applicant? Interesting. Okay. I have, I have no problem if somebody wants to make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing and move. and move to approve this, or grant this variance. If anybody wants to make it.
I'll make a motion to close the portion of the public hearing.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close the public portion of this hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's unanimous with closed. Nobody else can speak but us with our godlike powers.
So just, just one thing to clarify. You said there's a court going in and also a warm-up hut?
Correct.
Okay.
So, yeah, per plan. So what I'm looking for is a motion to grant a variance as per plan dated, whatever this is dated.
11/23/22.
11/23/22, is that what that is? Yes, it is. And drawn by Colin, no, Schneider, Davigan, and Leon. So this plan, we grant a variance based on this plan if somebody wants to make that motion.
So moved.
It's been moved, it's been motioned. Does anybody got a second for that?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of granting, say aye.
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 You're good.
Thank you so much.
We didn't have to torch you or stick you with a sharp object or anything. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Granted.
Thanks.
So now, do I have to read the wrong one in again? Thank you. Anything else? You got anything? Is this going back? Going back? We got, you gave me two. I think it's all you from here on out. Pretty sure it is anyway. So, I think you've got two things in front of us this evening. You've got Ronnie's, and you've got, which one? This one was, this was continued? And you've got Dos Amigos.
Dos Amigos.
You want to go Dos Amigos first?
Yes.
Okay. So Dos Amigos has already been read into the record, so I don't have to read that one. I'll pull the folder, and you can go ahead with your presentation.
Sure. Cold like everyone?
Yep.
Good evening, Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. I am here before you, speaking to a petition that you saw last, I want to say last November, maybe late October. This is 12 Large Street. If you recall, we came before your board with a proposed build for a three-bedroom Cape on a lot which had had a merger issue. The proposed build is one that would meet all other requirements under that bylaw except the merger issue that we had in the back title. And we left that hearing looking for guidance and the board really wanting us to go to conservation because there were some concerns regarding velocity zone, wetlands, erosion control. So we left that meeting thinking, okay, we're gonna go to conservation. Today I submitted to you, just so you would have that for your record, the NOI that was submitted by the applicant to the conservation board. They met February 1st last week. And I spoke to the conservation agent this morning personally, just to confirm, because the engineer had said that that was approved. And they didn't have any problems in regards to the erosion control line. The applicant had submitted a NOI that then will be an OOC on the property for the build. There were no other issues or restrictions unique on the application. So now we're back in front of you. I know that when we left it, it was sort of, let's see what conservation says. And we have that now in front of you, that this proposed build, as approved or as presented to you back in fall, is okay with the conservation board. They didn't see any other issues or reasons to deny that application. If you just refresh memory again, this site has water and sewer connection. There's actually a betterment on the property. I know we discussed that. But I think one of the matters to be had is that really does speak to the hardship on the property. If for something to be accruing a betterment for the town had installed this, considered this a lot. So we're asking for you to think about the unique situation we have in front of you. So sometimes the idea is we don't want to open any sort of floodgates of lots that we don't think is buildable. I think the fact pattern here is pretty unique, to find a lot that has a water-sewer connection that has, meets all of the conservation regulations, that is actually bigger than the average size in this neighborhood. So all those surrounding, the facts surrounding this case, we hope you take a look at it. And again, any questions? Because I know this was backfall. I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. And because we've continued and put you through the, go to conservation and come back and all this, et cetera, et cetera, I did spend some time on this today and other days. But in particular, I read about six times Section 1381 of our bylaws, and read it and reread it and read it again. And I drew some conclusions, and I'm inviting my fellow board members to read 1381, if they've got it, if they've got bylaws with them, to get themselves up to speed on this. I also started looking for legal opinions. And because I happen to have business with different attorneys in town, I called a few of them, excluding this one, because that would be a little bit of a conflict, looking for a legal opinion. And the consensus that I got in my non-legal language is the lot exists, whether it exists legally or illegally, or whether it should have been combined or not combined, isn't really a matter for the zoning board, or possibly not even for the building commissioner. His reason for denying this permit is the same contention that I held and sort of kind of still hold. But we're the zoning board of appeals. We're not a court. We don't side with the land or title passed legally or illegally, or properly or improperly. The lot is as big as or bigger than the other lots in the area. And as you read 1381 and reread it and read it again, this lot should, in my personal opinion, be granted a building permit. That's my, that's my opinion. That's my opinion after talking to other people who are more educated, more learned than me on these matters. My reason for asking so many people was simply, whatever the board decides this evening or whatever, there's a final decision made. If we decide to grant, to overturn the building inspector's decision not to issue, then the applicant's gonna appeal that decision, and it's gonna go to another authority and be heard with more scrutiny. And it may or may not be overturned. And if we decide the other way, it's gonna be appealed and go to a higher authority and either be supported or declined. So, I personally have come to the conclusion, and this is me personally, and the rest of the board can vote the way they want. If Nazzy was chairing, and I was sitting and felt more comfortable making a motion, my motion would be to grant or to overturn the commissioner's decision, tell him to issue a building permit. And if there's neighbors that are aggrieved, let them file an appeal. There's a 20-day period for them to have that opportunity. It kind of moves this thing forward. It's been in front of us for a long period of time. That's where I sit. Everybody else can be where they want. We're gonna, this is gonna be by vote. It's not my decision. Anybody? Nazzy or Jacob from Zoom have any comments?
No comments.
Jake?
No comment.
Okay, go and turn into the board. Have you guys had a chance to read that 1381 that I referenced? You want a little more, couple more minutes? Should I talk to, see if anybody from the public wants to get up and talk at us? Talk with us? Rick?
I'm ready.
You're still, you're all set?
I'm ready, yep.
You're still reading?
No, I said I'm all set.
You're all set? Any comments, questions?
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you.
You want more time to read?
I'm good.
You're good. Mrs. Debonese, what about you? I know that you like to read. You want some more time to read? We'll come back to you. Anybody here in the room on this matter that would like to speak in favor or against? Well, I saw two hands come up. Ladies first. Come on up, state your name and address. I don't know. Maybe, maybe we should make it gentlemen first. I don't know. Get Martin, but we picked you. Go ahead. State your name and address.
Jennifer Lovell, 5 Hemlock Street, Wareham.
Okay. And what's your comment?
Okay, I'm pretty sure this is probably going through, and, you know, we'll be good neighbors, whatever happens. But the one thing I did have an issue with, which you really guys don't have anything to do with, but at conservation, they said they could clear cut the land. So they're gonna take every tree of land. That's the only, that's the only comment I have to make with it.
But that's a conservation issue, not a zoning. But you just want to, you want us to know?
I just, yeah. But other than that, yeah. You know, I talked to some other neighbors, and it's like, well, it'll be good for our property values, anyway.
The conservation commission didn't tell them there was a single tree there that they had to save, but they don't have to cut them all either.
Well, they said they were gonna cut them. But anyway, other than that, since I've been speaking before, I just want to do it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? I saw a gentleman over there looking at the phone. You're not waving at me anymore? You're all done. Veronica, did you get a chance to collect your thoughts?
I, I did. And I, I remember this because it came before as before and the initial thought about it.
How we struggled? That's why I really spent some time looking into it.
I believe we gave them homework to do, and they did it.
Yeah, they did. Exactly.
I think, my thought at the time when we told them they had homework was to go to conservation. But my thought on that is it's not conservation's job to decide whether or not the lot is buildable. So, you know, regardless of what conservation has said, I only see one clean deed here, and the property has transferred several times, right? And as the building commissioner had stated in his letter, this in 1979, we're talking way back, it was looked at as one single lot. So I'm not, I'm just confused as to why in 2023 we're coming, looking at this as a separate lot. And I do think, we're not a court, but basically, we know that the lot's not buildable. So regardless of being a court or not, it's not, doesn't meet the guideline. And the commissioner has told us that it's...
We don't know that it's not buildable.
Well, according to our zoning laws, it doesn't meet the requirement because it was one lot in 1979. And somebody sold off a piece of it? That doesn't make it buildable today. That's just my thought.
I understand. I, I came at this with the same opinion a year ago? When do we start all this? Do you remember?
I believe our last hearing was October 26.
22.
22.
That was our last hearing?
On this matter.
When did, when was the, when was this?
Oh, the application. Feels like ageist.
Dos Amigos. Maybe we can get a... It's been going on for quite a while, is my point. Pardon me? Front of the folder. On the outside.
August 24th, is that?
August 24th and 22 is when we had our first public hearing. Stamp location with the treasurer. At 7/11/22, we've been at this since July of last year. So, does anybody feel there's any need to continue keeping this open to the public? Or are you guys ready to make a decision tonight? If you're ready to make a decision, let's close the public portion of the hearing.
So moved.
So, I have a motion on the floor to close the public portion of the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public portion of this hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Nazzy's aye. We got enough ayes to close the public portion. I think Jake said aye, too.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Just for the record, everybody said aye. So Dos Amigos is closed. It's time to make a decision. Are we gonna, what's in front of us? What are we, what are we doing? Are we granting a variance? Yeah. We're looking for a variance from the requirements. And the variance that they're asking for, I would say, well, see, here's, here's where I ran into a little bit of a stumble earlier. The building commissioner denies the permit because of the, he says it was part of a different lot. But, but the notice for public hearing is asking for a variance. So I guess the variance, would the variance be for... Do you meet all the setback requirements?
Oh, yeah. So we meet every...
The lot coverage and the frontage?
If you look at your plan, there's, you can see the zoning district at the bottom. So, look at the frontage. We have 180. So as far as what we're seeking, as we're seeking similar ones I've done, we're basically the breaking the merger on the lot.
So, so what variance do we, do we grant in order to... There is no variance needed. You, you meet, you got the frontage, you got the lot area coverage, So, so what variance do we, do we grant in order to, there is no variance needed. You, you meet, you got the frontage, you got the lot area coverage, you got the floor area coverage. The only thing you don't have is a building permit. And let me look at the.
There is, I guess, the minimum lot area. That's, that's the idea, that it was a grandfathered lot.
A variance from the, from the lot size?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, and I, I actually misspoke. So I just wanna clarify. In 1952, the lots came into common ownership, and in 1979, they were sold when the requirement was 30,000 square feet. So they were sold as one parcel essentially for buildable purposes in 1979. It was in the 50s that it became.
These lots and another lot that's not included now, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, in 1952, 513, 514, and 515 came into common ownership. That was in 1952. In 1979, they were then sold as, to meet the lot requirement of 30,000 square feet. And then at a later date, the, a year following, it was sold and separated out, so.
So a portion of it was sold.
Right.
And when?
Which made it both lots unbuildable with those bylaws, right? If it's 30,000 requirement, now that is not buildable unless 514 and 515 buy 513.
Well, one of those is, one of those is built on.
Mr. Terry, if we're gonna open the discussion up, can we open back the hearing? Because I can't really combat this.
Yeah, you're.
If you wanna.
Point well made and well taken. We did vote to close the discussion on this. We really had a voting stage. To the public.
To everyone.
Because I made that statement.
What is it?
Everyone, public hearings closed, you can discuss it, even board members.
Okay.
Or you gotta reopen. If you don't, if you guys wanna reopen it, that's fine.
Board members can discuss it, and that's what you can do. You can deliberate on it now as a board.
We can deliberate on it as a board, but she's bringing up, she's bringing up a point that the applicant should have the opportunity to answer you, I think.
Why, I wasn't talking to the applicant, I was talking to the board members.
Then go ahead, talk away.
I, I'm done. I just wanted to clarify.
Do I have a motion, do I have a motion to vote on? Does anybody wanna make a motion? I don't. Either to, either to grant or to deny?
For the record, I'm not, just for the record, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I wasn't in the hearing to begin with, so it's you five, so I don't have a vote.
You won't vote, but you'll make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to grant.
Okay, Jacob Morrison is making a motion to grant. Can I get a second? If nobody grants, if nobody gives me a second on that, I'll second it myself. It's been moved and seconded to grant, to grant a variance from, for a lot size. All in favor, say aye? Aye? Oppose?
Aye.
Okay, I got two ayes.
Nay.
A nay?
Nay.
A nay?
Aye.
And an aye. We got three ayes and two nays. How does that work on a variance? Where are we?
It's lost.
It's lost. Three, two, zero. It's lost. You got it?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, so that ends that one. That one's closed. Dos amigos went on and on and on and on. Is that this one? I just don't wanna cut you out. So now we move from Dos amigos over to Ron's Realty. And that's the one that I started reading.
I don't mind, um, go ahead.
What's that, you don't mind if I?
You can open it, um, and then maybe Mr. Madden, I don't know. He's on a Marion Conservation Call. On Zoom, but he was gonna come, so he could be popping in after. If he doesn't come, I'd probably, just, I know there's a butters here, so.
He's on Zoom?
Nope, he's on a different Zoom.
A different Zoom. He's on Zoom with a different board.
And, but he's coming here. He was just gonna finish that up.
Okay. So, do you have the ability to communicate with him, text or anything like that? Give us an idea of how long he might be? I don't mind waiting as long as other, as long as we're not, we're, we're going back, we're discussing, for the record, we're discussing Ronnie's, Ronnie's Realty. And I will, because there's nobody else. Well, you know what? If he's not here yet, I do have, I do have an agenda item
Okay.
that I can jump down to that's not, says possible discussion, et cetera. So, just sit right there for a minute. Ron's Realty is kind of on hold. To the board, Nazir and Jake included the application that came in front of us for the storage facility where the Wareham Pharmacy used to be. Over there on Cranberry Highway, near the new plaza and everything. Are everybody familiar with what I'm talking about?
Yep.
Nazir?
Yes.
Jake, you got me?
Yes.
Okay. If you recall, we made a decision, the decision was appealed, it got drug along for a long time, just about the time it was about to go to court. The appealing parties withdrew and the applicant joyfully went over there with bulldozers and started working, and we went, whoa, hold the phone. You still need a special, you still need a site plan review. And we sent them off on that errand, and they're gonna be coming back in front of us. In the interim, I got a, I got it by email, or we all got by email, a letter stating that the new town engineer for the peer review has, has done work for this applicant in other towns and wanted to make sure that there was no perceived conflict of interest. I don't see it being a conflict of interest. Does anybody on the board feel that there's a conflict of interest for the engineer that's now representing the town?
To clarify, the engineer didn't do the work, it was other people in the firm that did work for the, it was the firm, the firm he's been in that did the work for this.
So, somebody that worked, you know, somebody that worked there. You guys see any conflict with that? They're gonna be the, there's, there's already a 53G account set up. What the applicant is saying is they'd like to start sharing information with this engineer so that when they come to us, he's already had a chance to see the plans, and we don't have to say, okay, let the engineer look at it. They, you know, let, give him a chance to have already seen it. Anybody have an objection with that?
Nope.
Nope. Jake, Naz?
No.
Nope. So for the record, I'd just like it to be known that I'm gonna call Dennis Connery tomorrow and tell him, yeah, go ahead, share the plans with the town engineers, with the peer review, so that when they come here, we've already got it under review. The account already exists, correct?
That's right.
Yeah. So instead of making them wait till they get here, and then us telling them to go share it, they can share it. All right, well, and, and did you get ahold of Bill in the meantime?
Yeah, he's behind another hearing in Marion.
They haven't even heard him yet.
I think it's fine, I'm presenting anyways, he's just there for technical questions, so if it does, we can open it again, there's a butters here, so I wanna give them
Okay.
the opportunity if it gets continued.
Okay, so, so let's, let's get it open, let's let the butters speak, anything they have to speak. Warning, the butters and the board members that we're probably gonna need to continue so that we do have the benefit of all the proper information. And like I started reading this before, I'll read it again to cross the Ts and dot the Is. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on February 8th, 2023, at 6:30 PM. Room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 1-23 for a special permit from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Ronnie's Realty LLC, care of GAF Engineering, Inc., of 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Proposing construction of an 1,800 square, more or less 1,800 square foot, two bay motor vehicle service garage located at 3178 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. That's assessors map nine, lots W-19, W-20, W-24, and W-25 in the Commercial Strip Zoning District. Go ahead.
Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. Can you just check through your packets if you have, like, my letterhead? If not, I printed some.
I've got GAF Engineering in my packet.
So if I can just pass mine out, it has architectural renderings that we didn't have until recently, so then you can see what, what that building.
Is that this, or?
Nope. That's the, that's the whole line.
So that's it, okay. Yeah, okay, that's what I saw, I saw it. But. So we have two plans, we have a set of plans that came with our packet. And then we have.
That's a civil set.
Architectural drawings to add to the packet.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So I'm gonna start, I guess, with the, just a little overview.
So everything you're saying is these yellow pages, correct?
That's right, bond paper. So, I'm here representing the applicant. Ron's, Ronnie Dow owns this property, and this is currently, if you drive on Cranberry Highway, there is a multifamily, and then there's this other building there, and it's, when you probably drive by, not necessarily know where it is, but hopefully you've driven by and taken a look. So, what we're here in front of you for is the denial based upon use. So we're looking for a special permit for the use that he's proposing here. And in the use we're looking for is the motor vehicle service. Under the bylaw, it is a special permit through the zoning board. There's really only three or four districts where this is allowed. There's only one by right, which is industrial, and then there's other two or three in Article 320 in that use table that allows this to be reviewed over a special permit. I think the reasoning behind that is to make sure that things aren't going up in areas that aren't, aren't commercial, that aren't, you know, it's not going in the middle of the neighborhood sort of thing, so. So we're at the special permit threshold. So my, what I wanted to do is just reiterate 1461, that's the legal standard you have for a special permit. So you have the six factors, which some, some of them overlap, but the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Specific site is appropriate location for such use and structure and condition. Number three, there's no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Number four is really talking about appropriate facilities, so things like sewage treatment, that, that's handled there. There's no issues with protection of drinking water at Wells. Five, again, very similar to the first, but that this structure and this use does not propose a substantial detriment to the town or the neighborhood. And the last is, the proposal conforms with all other applicable provisions of the Wareham zoning by, by law. So that's, that's where we're at on our, our standard of looking at the change use. Currently on the site, there is a U-Haul service, so he has some U-Hauls there. But we're looking to do this new bill, which is why I wanted to include the architecturals for you to kind of see what, what is this going to look like. Be two bays, one bigger bay, one smaller bay. The idea is to be able to do kind of inspection stickers, things like that there, and then so you can kind of look at that rendering, and then look at the big plan to see where it's gonna be placed on the lot. There's gonna be, and again, Bill's not here to necessarily speak upon, on the plans, but take this building, stick it in where the new building's gonna be. It's kind of in the corner of the lot. On that map too, I think what some of the questions will be, are there any other setback variances or impervious surface? It actually is well under those. So in my note, I talk about maximum building cover, cover in this district in CS is 40%, where our proposed build is 26.2. Impervious cover is 65%, we're under at 60. So it meets those actual requirements for the build, but we need a use, and it's not a variance, it's a special permit. The idea is the, trying to work on Cranberry Highway and taking some of these pieces of property, Cranberry Highway has been now where everyone go, everyone takes that instead of the other highway. So we really wanna capitalize that area for our Wareham businesses. So this is a highly sought after area to have this sort of business at. As far as being detrimental to the neighborhood, the access is, is on Cranberry Highway. And in my opinion, we're improving that to make it not, there's two, I think, curb cuts right now, where people can swing in and try to do U-turns and things like that. On, on the plan that you see, you can see that it's landscaped. So on Mr. Madden's plan, there's plantings, there's an access that's a lot smaller than what's currently there. So I thought that was a great improvement to what's on the site currently. It's gonna create a buffer for plantings, which is not there. And that's something that we've been looking for on Cranberry Highway, I would say, you know, seeing some of the other petitions and in my experience, on not only just kind of putting as much businesses as possible, but thoughtful development. Believe that this would, I'm not sure when this building was erected, but in order to, you know, to take that down is really going to, I think it, as long as I've been alive, I don't know, but it's been there for a long time.
The old Tina's Nipahut.
What was it?
Tina's Nipahut. You could buy baskets, you could buy all kinds of.
Oh, okay, you're educating me on that. So.
Tina sat in the back room and weaved baskets.
Okay, very interesting. So, I think this is a great addition. I think that it fits into the nature of what we're trying to do on Cranberry Highway. Commercial property is really valuable over there, and that's stuff we wanna bring to the town. So, we do have a butters, so I want them to be able to speak, answer any questions. Again, if it's, it's, would, you know, actual questions on the plan of where things are going, I would just defer to Bill for that. But anything in regards to the standard or how this would be detrimental, I'd be happy to answer on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I am, I'm, I'm familiar with the property. I know that we have two members on Zoom. I can see Nazir. Where he is right now, it's like 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning, and I wanna thank you for being here with us. Do you have any comments you'd like to make on this at this time, or you wanna just listen for now?
I just wanna listen.
Okay. What about you, Jake?
Yeah, same, just listening, I'm fine.
Okay. So usually we start down there, and I'm gonna go over this way this time. Any comments, questions?
No, not at this time.
All right, now I'll go over here.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I can depend on you.
I just, I'm trying to picture it, so I don't know if there are.
You don't know where it is? You want, you want more description?
It's on, where on Cranberry Highway, is it after?
So you go down Cranberry Highway, you're heading for Buzzards Bay, on the left-hand side, there's this place that used to sell a lot of wicker, now they've got a bunch of chairs in the yard, they've got a hot dog stand, they got the cave, the golf course with the airplane in the water fountain.
Has this property?
No, it's the property just before it.
It's right across.
I just wanted to get you in the right town.
Yeah, okay.
Now that we're in the right church, count up three pews, okay. Okay, so now you know where we are in the neighborhood, just before it, and, and
Yes, okay.
He called it Tina's Nipahut. They, they've, they've usually got a couple U-Hauls. United Insurance was there more recently. They had a big sign up that's United. I don't know if you remember that, but does that get you in the
Yes.
Across the street from Olson's?
You know where the golf course is?
Yes.
Across the street from.
The wicker, I know, yes, I know.
So it's this, this side of that, on the same side of the road. Wedgwood Way, Wedgwood, I think it's Wedgwood, is that?
It goes in.
Wedgwood Place goes in by the golf thing, and then it comes back out. It goes in, it goes to a point, and then it comes back out, and this is the piece of pie that Wedgwood Way kind of goes in and out, and there's one house behind it. If you look, if you look at this, so when you look at that pitch and putt golf course that I was talking about, this is kind of a street that goes in right beside the pitch and putt. This is the property on the other side of the street, of the other side of the side street. If that helps. And it, it was originally just, there was one structure, there was a, there was a dwelling, and then there was an addition to the dwelling, and then there was a little, little shack and.
I believe they kept adding on there for a while.
Yeah, it kept.
Family members were coming.
Things hanging and, it was, I knew the people that owned it, I knew Tina and her husband, and the story of how they met overseas and all that, which is not really pertinent to this conversation, but there were a lot of people that picked on this property over the years, that when everybody complained about Cranberry Highway, they really meant this property. I don't know if I'm right in saying that, but I know it to be a fact. Cranberry Highway starts up in Brantree somewhere and goes to P-Town, so when people say Cranberry Highway, they really, anyway. That's this piece.
Okay, so I do actually have a question now.
Go ahead. Ask away.
Where's the parking gonna be for this? I don't see a whole lot of space for cars, and this is gonna be a car service facility.
So, again, Bill's on here, but on your plan, I see you have the parking for the residential structure, and then there's parking in front of where there's a proposed office. There's a, see where it says stop here? That's actually where they're going to be coming in. And then there's the two bays. I'd have to ask him, again, I didn't, if there's another space where the parking's going on there.
Excuse me, so how many cars, do we have an idea how many cars would be on that property at any one time?
We're definitely over nine or 10, aren't we? I mean, there's gotta be that many just with the residences.
I didn't hear the question.
How many cars?
You think I can put over there?
Yes.
Maybe, right now I can, an art plan, or how much I can fit right now?
An art plan.
An art plan, like, four cars.
Four cars.
Four cars for this business?
Yeah.
What about the people on the same piece of property, there's residents? How many cars do they have?
Each house that have two parking lot, we make it, we make it.
If you.
The big house, you have two cars here, and the small house, I have one car here parked and one car here. And here, he puts the cars for the truck, for the business.
So what's the total?
So there are two on Wedgwood Way, you see on the left side, that's the residential.
Yeah.
If you're looking in that, there's one parking space in front of that residential, another parking space there. All four of those are for the residential, and then he's saying the four are, there's one right here, one at where it says the stop here. one right here, one at where it says the stop here, and then the two that are in the bay is what he has. So there's not going to be other cars that are outside in that area.
So what are the requirements for parking for that number of residences and a business of this nature? Don't we have, don't we have number of cars, don't we have bylaws that say how many cars you're supposed to have per residence and per business?
Yeah, this was submitted to the building commissioner, and he didn't see any parking violations.
He did not, okay.
So I would assume that would have been in.
No, I read the commissioner's letter says it's strictly a use.
Yeah, I would assume that it didn't have enough parking, it violates that, so, I mean, we're happy to check with him again, but.
Yeah, well, we're looking at this plan here, and part of it's cut off, what he was referring to, where some of the cars, and unfortunately, your engineers at another meeting, so it's probably going to be necessary for us to continue.
Yeah.
So that we can get a real, a real plan like this instead of, you know. With, I'm almost 30 now, and my eyes have a hard time.
So the bigger plan doesn't show the four cars?
It does, yeah.
Yeah, the second page.
So the big plan that doesn't have the stuff that's on this page, I can see.
Is there a second page here?
Is there a second page? Uh huh, okay, so this is, this is this.
Yes.
Okay. So this is here merely to confuse me. I get it. Keep me guessing, it's all right.
I guess I'm not, I'm not going to really pick on, you know, how many we can and can't have, but is this all going to be by appointment only?
You can do this.
Yeah, the idea, this isn't going to be like a.
Big business, a small business, only for me.
Well, it only takes a matter of time before you're popular. So I'm just asking, you know, just asking for my benefit.
If you recall, if you know the other, some of the other service places right on Cranberry Highway, there's quite a bit of cars in other areas. So I know it's a busy industry, but the idea would be if we have the four spots, there's two in a bay, one for someone maybe going in, dropping up the keys, the stop there. Again, the building commissioner saw this plan, so he didn't seem like there needed to be other parking in any of the other areas. The idea when I think Bill created the plan was to make sure that there was space for all these mature plantings. So again, trying to prove, and that's right on Cranberry Highway. So similar to like where you're, we're looking at like Lindsay's, and there's that area that's like plantings in the front. So to try to improve the nature of what it looks like.
I see all landscaping stuff. Is there a landscape plan, or is this it?
I do not have one.
That would be it, right?
Yeah.
Because they've got two pages.
Yeah, so they want to see probably the plants and stuff.
So they're just trying to hide it, but I mean.
I get, and I get that the neighbors will probably appreciate that you want to plant a bunch of stuff behind and to the side of the building here, and that would prevent.
Golf balls from hitting it.
Well, it would prevent the golf balls from over here coming and hitting it, and it would also stop this, these guys from parking cars here because it's all planted with trees and stuff.
So it's limited to the parking and how many?
Yeah, I do see, I do see a parking issue here, and if it meets, if we've got enough parking based on our bylaws, then I don't think that we have the right to require more. Over here where it says proper roof drain infiltration system number seven, Coltech 150 HD right here, you see where I'm looking? On this plan right here?
I'm looking at the small one.
You want a big one? I've got an extra big one if you need it.
So again, so I'm looking at this plan, so it's one road in, I mean, one driveway in, one driveway out. There's no access to be.
And I, if I could just say, I do think, I do think we have a right to say that he needs more parking because it would be a detriment if there's not.
That's what I'm worried about.
Based on that, I think we need to talk about the parking here because it's, it looks to me like it's very tight.
We need the guy that drew this to answer these questions. He's pretty good at tap dancing too. My question was, is this an area where somebody could park cars and they just?
Where this proposed right here. Currently on the lot, I think when you go in, there's two accesses, and there's actually like the parking, the cement blocks that show there's a bunch of slots, like when it used to be the, I guess, the wicker basket place. So that's where that is. I don't know, again, he's not here to defend himself on where a different spot could go, or if it would dip into where the plantings are.
Yeah, well, I was looking at what was existing, what's existing, right? The building's a lot smaller.
Yep.
And it's situated so that, you know, that front can really be utilized with parking. Might be that, I mean, I don't know, the size of the building could be decreased a bit, maybe the, I don't know.
I guess if you were coming here and saying that the people in these houses were putting up this garage to park their cars in, we'd be like, yeah, sure. But we know darn well this is intended to be a business, you're looking to put an inspection bay in, correct?
Yes.
Nazzy's got his hand up. Go ahead, Naz.
Yeah, I think the question is here, you need to determine how many dwellings in there was the requirement parking for each dwelling. Then how many square feet is the garage? Based on that, you determine the parking spaces. You really need Bill to ask him, Mr. Madden, to ask him for drainage calculation for site plan review, because apparently this is a lot more than nine cars, so it's going to need a full site plan review with drainage of this. Then also, apparently, it's going to go for a curb cut before issuing a permit from the state because you're changing the use of it. So you definitely need Bill to answer these questions, Mr. Madden.
I agree, Nazzy. They've got an existing curb cut that they're maintaining, but, and they're eliminating.
Changing the use though, you're changing the use.
Yeah, I got you. And it looks, it looks to me like the plan was drawn to kind of like show less than nine cars or eight, you know, so that it wouldn't look like it needs site plan review, but it sure kind of does look like it needs it to me.
How many dwellings in there? How many apartments? How many apartments, how many dwellings? Two apartments.
They're showing two structures that say existing dwelling. Each structure is one family, is one unit?
Yeah, each one, one unit. They have two families.
And so the little building, that's going to be an office?
Yeah.
And that's going to be part of this garage thing?
Yes, it'd be the office of the garage.
So there'll be no office in the garage?
No.
So every time you want to answer the phone, you got to walk outdoors?
No, I have somebody working the office answer all the phone.
Cordless phone?
Yeah.
Cordless, imagine that. All this technology, huh?
It's better for the customer when they come in, they can sit, relax.
You can stick it in your ear.
I don't have a problem, Mr. Chairman, to go and confirm these with Mr. Turner, because I think if he thought it triggered site plan review, that would have been included within, again, our denial.
Yeah.
So there's eight vehicles you see on the plan. If it behooves the board to see a confirmation of, there are two units here. Okay, two car, we need two parking spots for that, just some sort of confirmation. But that's why we're not here in front of you for site plan review.
No, I think we're leaning towards kind of indicating to you that it appears at this point, that it appears that we're going to be calling for a site plan review. So I'm trying to give you that heads up in the essence of time, you know, for your benefit, for the applicant's benefit. If we're going to need a site plan review, he may as well know it upfront and get a new checkbook with Bill Madden's name on it and all that stuff that goes along with it. And I'm just, you know, giving them the heads up. Also looks like we're going to need to ask to continue because we have questions that we need answered that I don't think can be answered tonight. And going back to the number of cars and how many are required for each unit, I think it's one and a half or two cars per residence, and there's four there in this business, but I'm not sure, so I'd like it answered. All that said, we've let the board, anybody on the board have any other comments before I open this up to public comments? Okay, I see people in the room here that look like they may want to speak. Do you folk, are you folks here to speak to this matter? Come on up and state your name and your address and whatever it is, whatever comments you'd like into the record.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Vincent Simone.
Please, please take one of the seats and get, get your face close to a microphone so that when the FBI goes over every word you say, they can make sure they get your right pronunciation of your name.
Vincent Simone, 19 Wedgewood Place. I'm here to represent the interests of the six residential properties on what we call the Wedgewood Neighborhood. I'm, I'm going to be working off a rendering, and I think my comment may actually be shorter if I give you copies, may I? It's just a rendering.
Thanks, attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm.
Job that I usually do fast.
That was nice, that was nice of you to do that for him.
I'm, I'm, I know nothing about zoning, I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a retired resident in that area. I want to describe.
I'm sorry, what's his last name?
Mine?
Yeah.
Simone.
Simone, Mr. Simone. So you had, your family had, has the, what, the property on Wedgewood Place or on Wedgewood Way?
Well, it's kind of odd. I think numbers were done before there was any sort of rigorous way of doing it. My property is number 19, it runs up Wedgewood Way.
Wedgewood Way?
Yes, my property does.
And on this plan, on this plan that you're showing us here, they've got numbers on it?
Okay, my front door is in Wedgewood Place because I'm right at the point of the V.
Okay, okay, so you're at the one that's .17 acres there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wedgewood, it's public, but it feels very private because nobody knows we're there. We're tucked in between Jefferson Shores on the, what about that, east, and Indian Mound on the west. Between the two, there's a wooded wedge of land called Wedgewood. And it's defined by, I made the line a little bold, by properties that run along Wedgewood Way, along the outside, count to a V. There's then a footpath, and then the property comes back up along Wedgewood Place. There are six residents on that, on the Wedgewood, what we call the neighborhood, I don't think it's anything official. By the way, I, if I use the wrong words for something, please feel free to.
That's all right, Mr. Simone, you're doing fine.
I'm beyond the age of embarrassment.
You're over 32?
Over 32. Hope it's not over 32 words. These, these six residential properties have a couple of things in common. Number one, they all have Wedgewood addresses. Okay, and you can see the addresses on there, nine, five, low numbers, 19.
Yep.
So they all have Wedgewood address. They also have Wedgewood driveways, so that they depend upon those two roadways as our connection to the world. If those two get blocked or constrained in any way, for example, we had a few years ago, big snowstorm, the trucks didn't get to us for three days, we were marooned. Now, we have to prepare for that, so that's no, that's no problem. But I'm, what I want to draw your attention to is the roadways. It's very important that those roadways not be constricted, not be blocked, not have any kind of, anything that would keep, first of all, the residents from coming in and out, but also the service vehicles that come in and out. Trash pickup, mail, Amazon Prime. So we have deliveries coming into, during the COVID, for example, people had food and medicine delivered. It's also very important for those roadways to stay open because of emergency vehicles. There's no other way to get to my house, for example, except down one of those two I want to make a distinction, and I don't want to insult anybody, but the property that you're talking about here, what is it, 10, right on, I bolded, I put a bold mark around it.
Yeah, we got it.
That's the property you're talking about.
Yep.
So.
Does that also have a Wedgewood address, or does that have a Cranberry Highway address?
No, that is, that is not Wedgewood technically. It has a, their number is 31, 3,170 something, whereas we have numbers like 18.
They're on Cranberry Highway.
They're Cranberry Highway.
Yep.
I'm going to refer to it as the business plot as opposed to the residential plots.
Yep.
I know that's not an official way, but I just have, have to think of it that way. What else are I going to say? There has been an agreement among the residents of Wedgewood since, while I was there as a kid in 1955, that this roadway, these roadways, which were newly, newly paved at the time, I mean, people were thrilled, they had a paved road down there, that these roadways must be kept open and that there be no parking along the roadway. As a result, each of the residents has made a provision for if you have someone visiting you, your kids, your friends, and so forth, you are responsible for getting the cars off the road and away from the roadway so as not to block or constrict those roadways. Those roadways are approximately one car wide. Oddly enough, Wedgewood Way is just a little bit bigger than Wedgewood Place. Everyone agreed to that. And, and that has gone from 1955, as far as the residents are concerned, right up to this day. So for nearly, what, 70 years, nobody parked along the roadway. If you park on the side off the roadway, you're on private property. If you park slightly off the roadway and onto what we call the berm, which is also town property, the neighbors grassed that in after the road went in so that it wouldn't erode because the water thunders down.
Down there pretty good, yep.
Yeah, thunders down.
Considered off Cranberry Highway.
And it goes down the dirt on the side. So what they did was they grassed it in, we call it the berm. So there is public property beyond the roadway itself, in addition to the roadway itself, but not very much. By my house, it's only about a foot wide, this may be three feet wide as it goes up. This agreement, it was, there was no meeting, no notes, no, nothing like that.
It's just a gentleman's agreement, ladies and gentlemen agreement amongst the neighbors. It's just a, yep.
Mostly a bunch of World War II veterans sitting around talking about cars and baseball when the road comes up, okay, because they're part of the road. So that, that has held as far as the residents is concerned up to this date. The problem comes somewhere around, if you look at the property, which has the bold mark around it, that little house in front, that was there in 1955. Wonderful old couple, I don't want to tell long war stories, but they lived there, they were the only year-round people at that time.
The one on Cranberry Highway, the ranch-style one that runs?
No, it's a little tiny bungalow house right up close to the Cranberry Highway and right up close to Wedgewood Way. Does that make sense? You can see a little, little faded rectangle there.
Is it the faded one here that says .06 acres?
It says .033 acres.
.033, oh, so the parcel that the applicant, the applicant's piece? So there's a, one of the buildings on that property?
Right.
Okay.
In the 1960s, the, this property was sold to a man whose name, I'm not going to mention any names anyway, who built and operated Tina's Nipah Hut. It was a, it was a little house with a big barn-like structure in the back. His, his parking was on that, that lot, and the people who came into that lot, came in, parked on the lot, did their business with Tina's Nipah Hut, and went back again. They never used the roadway. Even the owner of Tina's Nipah Hut, who has nothing to do with those roadways, this piece of property does not go out onto either of the Wedgewood. piece of property does not go out onto either of the Wedgewood roadways. These are specifically for the people who would be trapped without them. That went along fine. Tina's Nippah Hut was there for 25 years, something like that. Then a new owner came in, I'll call him Mr. Investor. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. And unlike the previous owners, he was not a resident on the property. But what he did was he completely gutted the little house and Tina's Nippah Hut. Did a beautiful job. New windows, new doors, new siding, new roofing, everything. And he converted Tina's Nippah Hut, this gray board barn-like building, into another residence. Did a beautiful job. What he didn't do was he did not provide for the parking driveways for the tenants of those two houses because he rented them. Okay? That was the beginning of a problem. What he did, on contrary, was he, according to, just according to several of the tenants, is he forbid them to park on the property. Let me say that one more time to make sure I've said it right.
No, I betcha. He wanted them to park over on the side where it says Wedgewood Ray there.
You betcha.
And he didn't want the cars over here so he could get more cars for business on...
Yeah, okay.
Almost like I lived there for 27 years myself, sir.
Oh, that... Really?
Yes. I was your neighbor. But that's all right, go ahead.
I didn't know that. So all of a sudden, we've had this rule for 40 years, cars start showing up on the roadway. The tenant tells us we have nowhere else to go. So let me use my hands to demonstrate something. What started out as, first of all, it made a mess. It broke all the, the side of the asphalt, all the grass berm was gone. I mean, it just started looking like gasoline alley. I don't know with you, I'm dating myself with that. Started out one or two cars, then three, then four. That filled up the entire space. Then we have another new owner come in, a very nice man, by the way, and all of a sudden, the cars are parked this way. More out on the roadway.
Went from parallel parking to diagonal parking.
Yeah, and made another space on the end. Okay? If you think in terms of the geometry, if you have a rectangle and you twist it into a parallelogram, you gain in some areas, you gain, okay, lose another. Still, the encroachment became worse. Then the summer, a car shows up on the other side, okay? On the dirt. Soon after that, a wrecker, a big wide-body, what do you call it? Tow truck. Talked to the tow truck driver, what are you doing here? Okay, you're blocking up the roadway. He said, I have no other choice. He was a tenant in those things.
Now, was he there just to take a car or was he parking it there overnight?
Well, he was parking it there overnight.
Okay.
Yeah. So we've gone from a situation that's kind of aggravating and annoying because we have to turn around the cars to get out, to one where the roadway is now very restricted. And it's, it's dangerous. And it's dangerous in this way. I'll start with the most trivial and get to the most dangerous. We did not get recyclable pickups for eight weeks this summer. I called the carding company, I got in a big screaming match.
The truck couldn't get in and out?
That truck couldn't get in and out. I walk Wedgewood Way, that's my exercise pattern. And in the fall, I saw a mail truck sitting on the side of the Cranberry Highway. If you can imagine, blinker on, he couldn't get in. I stood there for a few minutes to see what he did. He backed down the Cranberry Highway against the grain of traffic, okay? He could have been killed because of somebody else and then finally went in Wedgewood Place. My own personal experience, and at least one of my neighbors had a similar experience, is if you, if you can wend your way out of Wedgewood Way right now and go out for an errand, you expect to be able to get back in. I went out, went to pick up, you know, takeout, came back on Cranberry Highway, blinker on, I'm looking in the roadway, I'm thinking, I know a little bit of physics, so I mean, space and time doesn't change much. I thought, if I came out that roadway, I can get in.
Should be able to.
In, and there was a van and the tow truck. I couldn't get in. Now, think of my options.
So are you going in and out of Way or Place?
Way. Place is a whole other issue.
But your house is over on Place, correct?
Well, my front door is...
At the point of the, where Place and Way come together.
Right. All my property runs up Wedgewood Way. I don't have any property on the right-hand side. Do you see where it says Wedgewood Way?
I do.
Most of that property is mine on Wedgewood, off the side of Wedgewood Way.
But your house backs up to Jefferson Shores, correct? If I heard...
Pardon?
Your house, the back of your house is against the back of a house in Jefferson Shores. Or is the back of your house against something in Indian Mound?
The back of, the back of my, it's hard to tell what the back is. My house...
I might have had the wrong...
I have a...
Excuse me, sir. What lot is yours? What lot?
W...
No, is it 19?
I see.
19.
Okay.
19. That's a 19, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
My front door...
I got you where you are now.
Yeah.
I got you where you are now. Okay. So that's why, I couldn't understand why you're going in and out of Way when, I thought you were over on Wedgewood Place, but you're on over on Wedgewood Way.
No, this is all, the biggest problem is Wedgewood Way. The Wedgewood Way is the main artery in and out.
Yep.
Wedgewood Place, I'll talk about that later. That's not as good a roadway to come out on. So where on earth was I?
So you were, well, you were trying to convince us that they're parking cars in the way of Wedgewood Way?
Yes.
And it's a problem and they show them on their plan here and you explaining that they show two and you're saying that they've got three and more. That's where you were, if that helps you get back to your train of thought. I was.
If I can, if I can be bold enough to explain the position of the residents who...
Go ahead.
Most all of whom use Wedgewood Way, is we don't want any cars there. We cannot support any plan that has any cars there whatsoever. There were no cars there from 1955 to 1995 practically. And now it's, there's no way a fire truck can get through. I mean, we have people with diabetes, there's no way an EMS ambulance can get through. What we're, what we're suggesting from our point of view is that there'd be, go back to 1988 where there are no cars on that, parked on that roadway.
Is that, is that the brunt of your conversation this evening?
That and one other thing.
Go ahead.
Okay. Since there are no provisions for parking on the, on the property and you mentioned here, we're mentioning here, we're afraid that whatever plan is proposed on that, it will take up space that could have been used for parking for the residents. The residents have nowhere to go. They have no yard, they have no nothing.
Okay. I'm gonna, Mr. Simone, I'm gonna cut you short and I'm not, I don't, but I'm gonna invite you to come back up in a while. While you've been speaking, the engineer that drew the plan that we're looking at walked into the room. So some of the questions that may have caused us to extend may be answered, may not. But I'd like to hear from him and then when we're done poking him with a sharp object, we'll give you the opportunity to come back up.
Tonight or another night?
This evening. This evening. Just thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then you can, Mr. Madden, I saw you walked in. I assume you're here on this matter.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for my...
No, that's all right. You can't, they're doing good things with science these days, but I don't want to be cloned and I don't think you should be either.
Do you want all that, the plans that were submitted?
Yes. We have these, we have, we have plans, yeah, we have copies of the plan. I think we're good. If you want to hold stuff up and refer to it.
I'll...
Bring your easel, bring your easel up. Take your time. Everybody, everybody here, nobody here expects to be home before 10 o'clock this evening. And is that one finger you're holding up, John?
No.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So, so just to kind of bring you up to speed, Attorney Morton's kind of given us her spiel. We've looked at the plan, we've heard from one of the neighbors. And just so you can understand, the neighbor that was talking to us was talking and expressing great concern about the parking and particularly the parking that occurs and shows on your plan. The two cars that show on the plan on Wedgewood Way? Those two, yeah. Those two cars, it's, the evidence has been given to us that in fact, not only two cars, but three, sometimes four cars end up parked there. And they make access, egress and exit, in and out of Wedgewood Way very difficult, if not impossible at times. So, and that's where we were. And now you can go ahead and give us whatever...
Okay. The, just on Wedgewood Way, what we, what we did when we did this existing conditions plan, we located the gravel driveway that existed there today. That's where, that's where people park. A portion of it is on the lot, a portion of it is, a small portion of it is in the layout of the road. But you can see, we have 11 feet from the corner of the building that these two vehicles here could actually be slid over. We just demonstrated on this plan where the existing parking was and where the, where the existing vehicles had been parking. If you go down there to the site and walk around, you can go across the paved area, the paved with the Wedgewood, with the Wedgewood Way. And on the opposite side of the street, there's, there's like a, a soft shoulder, probably not a better, not a very good choice of words, but there's an area on the side of the road where other people can park. There's landscape timbers where someone, they're not shown in my plan because it wasn't really germane to art material. But if you go up here by the sewer manhole in this area, there's landscape timbers there that somebody has placed in the layout of the town public way. They're, they're there now, they obstruct any traffic that people are talking, that the little brief discussion that I heard. But to me, that Wedgewood Way is adequate for passage and, you know, we're not intending to use it at all. It's intended, you know, our project is really the construction of this building and the access and the, in the...
Gotcha.
The portion of the site to the, to the east. So what goes on on this western side? I'm not 100% sure, but we, we can see by the evidence that's in the street that there is a parking area here and it's been used for a very long time.
I'm aware of, I'm personally aware of it and we've been, we've heard. So before you came into the room, questions were brought up by, we got a couple of members on Zoom as well, by the way. Questions were brought up. What's the required number of parking spaces per residence?
Two per unit.
Two per unit. So there's two residences there now, so that would be four parking spots required for just those.
Which are indicated by the gray...
Yeah, I see them.
...or vehicles.
I see them. And then what's the required number of parking spaces for this proposed garage?
Two per bay.
Two per bay?
Correct.
So that would be four more?
That would be four, yes.
So that comes to a total of eight?
Yes.
So that's what you've got here? You're showing eight?
What about the office?
Say it again?
The office building too, what about that?
What about, okay. Good, good point. The little office building, that's another whole building. Does that require any parking?
We were using that office building in assuming that it was part of our, our bay. That would be the office building that the people that are coming to the inspection bay or the repair bay would deal with the operator.
So they'd need, they'd probably come by a vehicle where they got to park?
Well, we show, we show a space right in the front of this wood ramp for a patron.
That's part of the, we've already, that space has already been used up.
Right, but I'm just...
We need another space.
Well, there's, we can draw in at least two more right adjacent to this car within this, within this area here. So there is space for two. We were just showing the two per bay.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of challenging that because people are going to need to pull in off Cranberry Highway and if there were two, two cars parked there, they wouldn't be able to. So it's been suggested that this applicant needs a site plan review, even though we're not showing nine or 10 cars on this plan. The board has pretty much telegraphed that they're going to be looking for a site plan review on this, based on our observation that there's not, it may appear that you only have eight, but it would take, you know, don't take this wrong, Mr. Madden, but I'd have to be awfully gullible to believe that this parking is adequate to do inspections. I've gone for a sticker before and had seven and eight people in front of me in line.
I go for an sticker every year and I've never experienced what you're experiencing.
But I'd like to know where that is.
It's Sam's Gas.
Sam's, yeah. Oh, my wonder.
But that's where I go. But, you know, with respect to site plan review, I mean, the requirements of site plan review are nine or more parking spaces and...
Nine or more, yeah.
Yeah, and they exclude residential use. If you look at the applicability under, under site plan review, it excludes residential use.
So if you have residential use on the lot, it's not, it doesn't count?
That's, I just read the reg, I just, I'm just citing what the regulation states.
Which regulation is that?
Section, Article 15 of the zoning bylaw.
Could one of you guys look at that? I can't, I can't, it's hard for me to believe, I don't want to, you know, hold like a public debate, but it's hard for me to believe that our bylaw provides for this much density of use and the parking for the residences doesn't count. I think we need to take a minute and look that up. I'm not saying you're fibbing to me, I'm just saying it just, wow. Is it an interpretation or is that a fact?
Okay, under 1520 applicability, any new development, expansion or change of use other than a single-family or two-family residence, which would, under the parking schedule, number of parking spaces of sections 920 require 10 or more parking spaces.
Any new development, expansion or change of use.
Which we are changing the use, right?
Any new... 10 or more par... So... On the premises. Regardless of the number of parking spaces existing on the premises, shall be permitted only upon the issuance of a special permit from the planning board for, for site plan review. And then we're talking about 30 acres. So any new use can be granted only upon the issuance of a special permit from the planning board for site plan review. So does that mean you do need, in fact, need a site plan review?
I would say that it, that it doesn't because it says, or change of use other than a single-family or residential residence, which would, under the parking schedule.
Yeah, I'm reading that like you are Jim, that if it's not residential, it requires 10 or more regardless of what's there. Right?
That's, I guess, it's an... I guess, it's an interpretation.
So if it's a commercial, if it's commercial, it's, it sounds like it says, any new development or change of use, other than a residence, basically, which would, under the parking schedule, require, so, so basically, let's forget that other part. Any new development, expansion, or change of use.
Would require.
Would require 10 or more parking spaces, regardless of the number of parking spaces existing on the premises. So it would require 10 or more, regardless of what's there. So, to have a commercial property, you need 10 or more, a commercial use.
Correct.
So just that, those bays would require 10?
No. They require, they require four. The parking schedule requires two per bay.
Or left, right?
Under the parking schedule, I think it's Article 9.
It is Article 9. Two per lift or bay.
Two per lift or bay, that's what it is.
But it says if it's a change for commercial, it's 10, so we're kind of.
Well, I don't know if.
If, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, I, I certainly think that it does warn us going to Mr. Turner to get you a confirmation that this doesn't have site plan review. I mean, this is a big deal, right? If we're.
It is.
If we're getting a denial and there's no site plan review, we're moving forward a certain path, so we certainly want to make sure that these are done correctly, so it's not kind of coming back and forth. As Mr. Madden said, it's four spots, so we could perhaps maybe, as we're continuing anyways.
You're, you're looking to continue at this point.
Well, I think that that's important.
Yeah.
Right?
No, I think it's important, I want to read this a couple more times myself.
Yep.
Because I have to read things two or three times in order to decide what I, you heard me before, I wasn't listening to what I was reading.
Yeah, because we're here on an appeal of a certain letter, so then to, to kind of again bump to a site plan review, we need a new letter from the commissioner regarding that, it's a whole process, so.
Re-mailing and all that jazz, yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's important if we, I don't know, continue for two weeks and then have, perhaps between that amount of time, Mr. Turner can have a letter regarding the parking, a confirmation to, to send to the board.
Yeah, and I just want to further beat this horse a little bit, because I think if we, if we read that paragraph again, and I, I'm not taking sides, I'm just trying to read it, just like, if, if we cut out. If we go after the karma, and it says, any new development, expansion, karma, if we take everything after the karma, that's talking about single-family or two-family residences, and reread the sentence, it, it would, it would, it would support your argument. Any new development or expansion. Under the parking schedule, number of parking, section 20, require 10 or more parking, well, this doesn't require 10 or more parking spaces. Regardless, and, and the number of premises. Shall be permitted only upon the issuance of a special permit. But you still need to come here and make this board happy and make us believe you deserve a special permit, whether you need four places or 40 places. And I can tell you right now, listening to the questions I've heard so far, I'm not sure that this board is inclined to grant a special permit, from what we've seen and heard so far this evening. And I'll, and I'll further amplify that. It's obvious that, whether they, whether they count towards the number of spaces needed or not, there's two residents on the site already, and they're parking four cars there. And the way they're parking those four cars, is impeding passage on Wedgewood Way. And if you look at the locus. And look at, oh, look, let me see if I can do this. Do you by any chance have a benefit of a copy of this?
I have one.
Could you give one to Bill?
Yep.
Just so he sees it. If we're all, it, it says maps online by People GIS that Mr. Simone submitted. Just so you understand that I'm familiar with Wedgewood Way, if you look to the right of the parcel in question and look across Wedgewood Way where the, where the golf course is now, you know what I mean?
Yes.
If you look behind the golf course, there's a, there's, there's two lots on Woodside Avenue.
Yes.
And there's a house on to those two lots.
Yes.
I lived in that house for 27 years. I know Mr. Simone. I know this neighborhood, I know Wedgewood Way. And I'm going to go on record as saying you're going to be hard pressed to tell me that the cars parked on, outside those two dwellings on Wedgewood Way are not a problem. Just so you know, that's only one vote on the board, but I just want you to know that I'm very familiar with the neighborhood.
So we understand, and we've made observations during the.
Yep.
The design process and since we started doing survey work down there at the outset of the project. And, don't, you know, I'm not saying that what you've been told is inaccurate, but we have not been exposed to the same type of situation that's, that we're talking about. You know, it's a, it is a narrow way.
Oh, let me tell you, Mr. Simone was a real fun on the side when we lived there. He can be a real PIA, don't get me wrong. I think he's a nice guy, but when he wants to have his way, he can. I'm not sticking up for him, or I'm not sticking up for you. I'm just saying that I know the neighborhood, and I do think there's a problem there, and I do think, you know, we're going to continue, and I think you ought to look at this plan really well. And it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to absorb. I think they'd do very well there, giving out stickers at that location. I think it would be a, a great use for the location, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's, if it's not a traffic problem, I'm not sure. Even though they're going to divide eventually down there, they haven't done it yet, but eventually the state's going to come back and dig that up and divide the road in half. And even with the road divided, I still think that there's a problem getting the cars in and out. They're going to back out of that garage, they got to have room to turn around, they're not going to back onto Cranbury Highway, it's against the law to back onto a stateway. I got a ticket for it once when I was a knucklehead. I'm not a knucklehead anymore. Although there's people that would argue that, I know.
Stop clearing your throat.
No, I just got a tickle.
But we can, we can put some turning radiuses on the plan.
There's definitely, you know.
We can show the turning radiuses.
I think, yeah, I think you really, anybody else on the board have any comments, or? I'm ready to, I'm, I'm ready to grant a continuance, but I'm not ready to vote on this tonight, on this, not on this plan. I got to be honest.
Yes.
I mean, I could vote on it, but I can tell you where I.
Well, as you know, I was the first person to ask the first question of, a while ago, so you know where I stand.
Yep, so.
About the parking, sir. I was concerned on how people, if it was just by appointment only, so that way there there was no backup or confusion or congestion. So that was, that was my question.
And that would have been a suggestion that I would have made, is that it could be by appointment.
Yeah.
But, so we're here now, and we have waited, so.
Yep.
I'm, um.
And I think, I think even if it is by appointment, if this is a service station, not just for inspections.
Well, I was just.
Cars are going to sit there.
Yeah, well, I just, I just don't know how many cars could be there.
Yeah.
Whether it's by right or by, by not right, it's what's going to happen. And I definitely know, from experience down Wedgewood Place, that that is only one car in, one car out.
Yep.
I've been down there, I dated a girl that would live down there, and when you saw a car coming, you weren't going up that way, you had to turn around and make provision, and if you couldn't get by the five or six cars that were on the side, you were stuck there until somebody came out and did something, so.
I'm wondering.
I mean, it's a congested area back.
It is, it's, you know, Mr. Simone made points.
As the parking doesn't fall into those things, then we're fine, but I don't see that, it will never, I can't say that it wouldn't happen. And if it does, it's going to cause problems, and if there's any emergency vehicles that are going to get down there to anybody down there, it could be a hassle, so.
My memory of the proposed office and waiting structure, my memory of it was that it wasn't a very significant structure. I'm wondering if that all disappeared and became additional parking, and it was easier to back out of that garage and come onto Cranbury Highway nose first, and if that might not help to alleviate the problem. It's too bad there wasn't provision for some kind of an office in the, I just, I find it to be, I personally find it to be very tight. I think it's well engineered, I think you did a great job of making it all fit. It's amazing how, how things can be fit into small.
And as, as his interpretation of that rule, he is by it, but we have concerns about the safety issues. We don't want anybody killed there. So, that's where we're at.
I don't know, is, is parking the only thing that triggers a site plan review?
Yes, it is, unless it says in the table of uses that site plan review is required.
Pardon me?
Unless it says in the table of uses under table 320 that their site plan review is required, it's only by the number of parking spaces or the area.
So, parking spaces or area?
30 acres, yeah.
If it's over 30 acres, then you have to site plan.
Right.
If it's under 30 acres and over 10 parking spa, or over nine spaces, you have to have site plan.
That's right.
Other than that, there's no requirement for site plan. So this, so, there you go, that, and that answers that question. I'd, I'd still, I'd still think, and I think the applicant's saying she'd like, the representative for the applicant is saying he'd like to continue.
Yes, Mr. Terry, we could have an extension, I, I think I'd want to continue it for a month.
For a month?
That would allow, yeah, so we're looking at March 8th. To be able to, you know, meet with the client, speak in regards to maybe moving things, some things around, seeing what we can do, probably get confirmation from the building commissioner, just so you can, you can see that as well regarding the parking. And make some more notations, just to offer the engineering and everything, so.
So you'd be looking at either March 8th or March 22nd?
I would prefer the 8th. If there's, if there's openings.
So, so, we have a request for a continuance to March 8th, for. For. Ronnie's Realty, March 8th.
May I?
Go ahead.
Give me. I, I think when bringing another business, now you're creating a mixed-use business, a mixed-use project. You cannot ignore the part, say, I want to build the new business with the parking for it, and ignore what's existing. It's, you, you have to fix the whole property. You can't keep parking on the side the way they park. If it's 10 feet setback, you're going to park, if you, if you park the car in 10 feet, how are you going to open the door for the car? It's going to hit the house. And it's very dangerous to park in that close to a building. So you can't say, well, I only need four parking spaces, so whatever's existing, and it's a mess, I don't care about it. Another thing, how many employees going to work that place? Did we figure out the number of parking for employees? I know two parking by garage per bay or left, so that's four, how about the employees? Who's running the show there? One, two people? So how many cars are there? Now, the big barn that becomes a house, how many tenants is in there? Is it one tenant, two tenants? If it's only two cars each, why there's always there eight cars parked?
Excuse me.
So these are all questions. These are all questions that has to be asked and, and addressed. But for us to say, we're going to only concentrate in the garage and forget the mess that's there, I don't think it's, it's smart or it's professional to forget what's there and keep people parking in the road, like Richard said, it's, it's very unsafe. And consider that road's too narrow for emergency vehicles, EMS, fire, or whatever that is. So this is why it's very important for this board to consider a site plan, so we can hear from EMS, police, as well as fire department. All of a sudden, you have a place that's congested, and then there's a fire, and the fire truck can get there or can get in Edgewood, and now what do we do? So it's, it's a tight place, I'm not discouraging the applicant, it's a tight, tight parcel, and it's shape funny, it makes it worse. So the shape of the parcel makes it, I mean, makes it a lot worse for parking and design. It is challenging, I don't know if they could come up with any, any creation, whatever it is, but whether it needs a site plan or not, it's discretion, it's the discretion of this board to decide if it's detrimental or not detrimental to the neighborhood by issuing a permit or not issuing it. So it doesn't mean if it doesn't need site plan that the board has to issue a permit, a special permit. So, that's my case. So I think it's a good idea to keep it for the 8th, for March 8th, so everybody do their homework and think about it, and I guess we go from there. It is a challenging set, I hope it works, but I don't see it working. As Mr. Sample said, it's, it's very tough, I guess Veronica expressed that as well, as well as Jimmy, I believe. So, I guess the whole board's pretty much on the same page, that it's a tough, it's, it's a tough project.
If I could add one thing.
Sure.
The layout of Wedgewood Place and the layout of Wedgewood Way. I'll, I'll determine where those, where the layout lines are of the road, and I will show the, the board at the next meeting who the real culprits are in occupying the layout of the public way.
That would, that would be helpful.
It's not going to, I was there, I've been there a number of times, it's, it's not this, it's not this facility.
If you have to.
Everybody on that street is encroaching into the public way.
Yeah, but Mr. Madden, two, two rounds doesn't make a right.
Well, then we.
If the other people encroaching and your client. Excuse me, let me finish, you had, I didn't interrupt you. If, if the other people encroaching and you, it doesn't mean you can encroach, your, your client is encroaching on the road.
Yeah. As he's pointing, we have to deal with what's in front of us.
Yeah, no.
And I would say too, the reason I didn't really go with the site plan review is because I don't think this project is going to work here, because of what I see on the plans, it's very congested, so why do a site plan review when, I think Nazee had the same thought, he did, he voiced it, and that's why I didn't push for that, because I don't, I don't know how it's going to work.
Okay, I understand, yep.
But I, I don't think it would be a terrible thing if you brought back evidence on, you know, whether the road is passable or not, and, you know.
Those are, those are just my observations.
We listen to the neighbor, we listen to the neighbors, we, everything should be considered. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to send the applicant out of here thinking that we're totally against them, if, but, you can pretty much, you've felt the tone. We have, we have a request for a continuance. I did promise Mr. Simone that I would offer him the opportunity to speak again. Do you have anything else you need to say, Mr. Madden?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you very much.
And, and.
For the opportunity.
Did you have something else you wanted to say, Mr. Simone?
Yes, I will be mercifully brief.
Please come up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can Mr. Simone make the shot?
He just said he'd be mercifully brief.
Does that mean we're setting a limit?
That means he's going to be.
Two minutes.
Setting a time limit?
Mercifully, go ahead, be.
Two minutes, please.
On the, on the plan, I only saw it sort of briefly for this project, it shows two cars on the road, has two little rectangles sort of up against the house. The reality of the fact is on the ground, no one's going to pull right up against the building so that the passengers can't get out. What are they going to do? They're going to go partially on the roadway to, to open the doors. If there's even one car allowed in there, it's going to encourage other cars to go there, and we're going to have this whole encroachment business all over again. So, we're, we're requesting that any plan that is, that is approved, it breaks my heart to, to be opposing this gentleman, he is a very nice man. But any plan has in it specifically what cars are there and where they're going to be, and not on the Wedgewood Way road.
If the, yep, I get you, all right, thank you. Go ahead, go ahead, one more thing.
Okay, Wedgewood Place, Wedgewood Place is narrower and lower. Wedgwood Place is narrower and lower than Wedgwood Way. Wedgwood Way, you come up on the highway, you're high. Good sight lines, beautiful. Wedgwood, Wedgwood Place is low, uh, kinda boggy, and as you come up on the highway, you almost feel like your eyes are at road level. You're probably a little higher, but it has that kind of feel to it. And the sight lines are not good at the best of times. But this is not the best of times, because right along that roadway, um, are parked U-Haul vans, big ones, all along that, on the, on his property, but all along that roadway. So when you're driving up, you're seeing van, 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 and it, it makes bad sight lines impulsively. You can't see to the right.
That's, that's part of the reason we're continuing to give the board members the opportunity to drive down there and pull into Wedgwood Place and pull out of Wedgwood Way and further understand the situation.
A, a, a man and a woman, they need to earn a living, and I understand that. We're talking about the roadways, and the roadways don't, don't belong to that property. And that's all we're asking.
Thank you, thank you for keeping it brief. I believe, I don't, I don't know that we voted on it, we've discussed continuing, did we, did we vote?
We didn't. I'll move to continue to the, the eighth.
You made a motion to continue to the eighth, and who seconded it?
I second.
Richard seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Jake?
Aye.
It's unanimous, it's continued. Thank you all, thank you for putting up with us. We kinda drug it out, but gave everybody their opportunity to speak their mind. So we'll see you back here on the eighth. Of March. Do you, uh, keep a number? All that goes in here. And is there, we, we discussed, um, we discussed my concern about the, um, storage facility and letting the engineer get to work on that.
Yep.
I think there was, I think on the agenda it said discussion about, um-
Zoning articles.
Zoning articles. Is there any, any zoning articles, anybody cares to discuss?
Oh.
Yeah, if you have any.
Uh, I think we should talk about parking.
About?
Because that comes up, I, the, the, the parking, um, do you guys remember the service station at the corner of Onset, going into, on, Onset Ave? They're loaded with all those utility vehicles and all kinds of stuff over there.
Corner of Onset Avenue?
Yeah, the service station.
Which end? Onset Avenue-
Cranbury Highway.
Yeah, but Jefferson Shores or over by Depot Street?
I have a check.
That's Onset Ave?
Huh? Onset Avenue-
All right, near Bennys. What's that, what's the-
That's Main Avenue.
That's Main Ave.
That's Main Ave, that's what I'm talking about. How long have I been looking?
That's why I didn't know where you were.
Anyway, so me, the, the one on the corner there on Main Ave, at the light.
At the current main and Cranbury Highway.
Buzzards Way Garage.
What is it?
Buzzards Way Garage.
Buzzards, Buzzards Way.
That's the one that we recently passed within the last couple of years.
That's right, yeah.
And, much to my dismay, because I see that place now.
I know that-
Well, he's got, he's a car dealership and a service station.
In that lot, every speck of that lot is covered. It's packed, there's, it's-
We gave a variance for more, too, right?
I know we did.
And, and-
So I don't think there's anybody but ourselves, right?
I think it's-
No, but the point is, the article regarding what the requirements are for parking when you have a garage bay, it's only, it's one, oh, two cars per bay, which means one could be in the bay and one could be outside. So if you have a service station, that doesn't even make sense.
But if we're granting a special permit, and I think that's what that guy came against us, or maybe he asked for variance, the one that you're talking about in particular, in, in my observation, appears to be the type of person that, um, if you give him an inch, he wants to be a ruler. So, I noticed they put a, they paved an area and he puts cars out on what's-
That's not supposed to be like that.
It's been taken, you know?
No, we talked about how that's supposed to-
Pardon me?
We did talk about how that's supposed to be landscaped, it's still not there yet.
Yeah, so it's not the-
But I do believe, isn't there an issue because the highway came in and made the whole front of that building completely different? I mean, Main Ave going on, because we get the right on, it's almost three lanes there now, because you have the turnaround.
That was considered in the design of the site plan review.
They knew that before Buzzards Way was there.
No, I'm just saying, it just makes it worse now that you see it.
That was when I was a newer board member, I would never say that now.
In that instance, in that instance, we've got a-
I would never say that's a good project now.
We've got a business person that is gonna push to the limit, and then when he finds the limit, he's gonna keep pushing and find a new limit, but going to-
If I may, Jim, if I may-
Yep.
If I may, on that Buzzards Way Garage, we, we issued a special permit. However, it's the discretion of the selectmen to reduce the amount of cars to be sold, because they are the granting authority of the license. We grant the special permit, does not grant the license. Selectmen have the discretion to say, "You know what? Fifty cars is too much, we're only gonna give you this year twenty cars. It don't matter what the special permit says." So, the, the, the selectmen can discuss it, or somebody could bring it up to them. It's definitely very crowded, has no landscaping whatsoever, and the gentleman who bought it, unfortunately, if you guys recall the time that I told him there's a take and been taken of his land, and apparently supposedly the guy who sold it to him didn't tell him, all these things, the guy did get treated unfair by the seller, and he didn't know he's losing so much land. However, it doesn't mean he cannot, he does not have to comply. He has to do the landscaping, and the selectmen will have, will visit, revisit the license and see how many cars fit feasibly there. If they say twenty cars, it's twenty cars, and it's up to commit the zoning board, zoning enforcement officer, to go and count the cars and say, "You know what? You have a lot more than your license calls for."
Yeah, if they can count horses, they can count cars. I agree.
Right.
I agree. But as we grant a special permit, we have the power to say, "Yeah, we'll give you a special permit, provided you limit the number of cars on the site to X, Y, or Z, whatever." So, in the instance of the one that was in front of us tonight, we could, we could say we want X number of spaces, we don't care what the bylaw calls for, you're asking for a special permit. You want our special permit. This is what it's gonna take together.
If I may, if I may, let's not discuss the case before us.
Well-
However, also going back to Buzzards Way Garage, you said it, we gave license for fifty cars, not big trucks, monster trucks, that takes up each truck, like four cars parking lots, and then you call it a car. So it's, it's, this is a truck parking, it's not a car lot sales.
I got you, Nazee, but I'll bet you if we read the decision, either the word car nor truck was used, and the word vehicle was probably used.
Yeah, and they did mention that those were the type of vehicles that they were gonna have there. I remember specifically that they talked about those.
Yeah, so.
They, they said truck, because when the gentleman, he's a great guy, don't get me wrong, when he was working in Buzzards Bay, he used to fix regular truck, thirty-five-hundred dump truck, regular Chevy, regular Ford. Now are these sized trucks. I mean, he found a good, finds a good living in these trucks, which is fine. However, it's very, very crowded, and the place, it just doesn't work. I wonder, I'm surprised the fire department never came, paid him a visit-
Yeah.
And say, "Hello." I mean, I know, when I put two feet, brush over two feet, they knock on my door, but I'm, I'm special usually.
Well, you are special.
Yeah.
You are special. Matter of fact, I-
You know?
It's a permit.
I was at the school, they got classes for people like you, they call them special classes.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, me too.
But anyway, so hopefully, selectmen, some, somebody from selectmen listening, and when the license review will come in, take into consideration the size of the trucks and the numbers, and let them decide, and they can make their own call.
But, um-
Thank you.
Veronica brought up a good point, and, and the discussion was what we want presented to the planning board, to be presented to town meeting. And earlier this evening, in one of the hearings that was in front of us, for a repair shop, it says you need four parking spaces, two, uh, I'm sorry, it doesn't say four, it says you need two per bay. I think, I think we should make a suggestion that that number be changed. I think two per bay is probably inadequate and insufficient.
I, I think actually the whole parking article is outdated and needs to be reworked completely. I don't think the bays are the only thing that needs change on that table of uses, and-
Yeah, it just brings it to light that that parking is an issue with some of the stuff.
Yeah, exactly. The reason I'd, I'd wanted to put on the agenda item for zoning was that we have a public hearing coming up at the twenty-seventh of this month, before the planning board, where we'll be considering articles that have been brought forward to, they'll be brought forward potentially to town meeting in the spring.
So the twenty-seventh of this month is the deadline for us to, for us to telegraph the planning board what we'd like added, edited, or changed?
Yeah, actually, you can, you can do that beforehand, and whenever you wanted to-
On the twenty-seventh, they'll make a decision, or they'll hear it.
That's right, they'll be, they'll be going into a hearing at that point, once it's been noticed. If, if you have something that has to come, you wanted to have before town meeting, you're gonna have to get it into the board of selectmen and have them, uh, issue it to the planning board, and have the, the planning board hold a public hearing on the articles.
Can, can we put that on our agenda for the next meeting to have a discussion?
Excuse me, so what's the, what's the deadline that we should have all this done by?
Three twenty-seven.
Three twenty-seven.
Well, no, because three twenty-seven, they're gonna-
No, three twenty-seven, they're voting on it.
It's two twenty-seven.
Two twenty-seven?
It's two weeks.
Two twenty- Two twenty-seven.
Two twenty-eight is the, is the selectmen's meeting when they actually determine, decide on the, the warrant for the spring town meeting.
So my question is this, is the planning board gonna say, "We haven't had time to look into this, we'll do it next time"?
Yeah, if you have something, if you have parking, they're gonna, they're gonna postpone that probably till the fall town meeting.
So, if we kill ourselves, go home tonight and come up with something that we want changed, the chances are ninety, ninety to one that the planning board's gonna say, "We haven't had time to look into this ourselves, can we put it off to six months"?
More than likely.
Just wanted to-
Jimmy, Jimmy, if I may, if I-
That sense of urgency.
Please, Jim.
Yeah, go ahead, Naz.
Jimmy, if I may, going back, not to beat the dead horse, on parking spaces. When Buzzards Way Garage came, he came with a plan for fifty cars, showing parking spaces nine by eighteen, nine feet wide by eighteen. So this permit was issued based on nine by eighteen. Now, these trucks he parks there, they're like twelve by thirty. So, that's a big difference. I know cars and trucks licensed, I understand, but the size makes a big difference. Going back to parking to garages, two per park, two per bay or two per lifts. Now, for instance, my shop in West Wareham, I have two bays, however, I have eight lifts, because the size of inside, I was mandated for sixteen parking spaces. Then comes in the employees. I had to put, I have thirteen parking for employees. Nobody talked about employees tonight. Not, I don't wanna discuss, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I'm like, to myself, I shouldn't be talking about that case.
You're talking about parking garages and bays, we get it.
We're not talking about this particular one, yep, we got you.
Right, so it should be, employees comes in place, uh, uh, lifts come in place. If you have two doors, it doesn't mean it's two bays. You could have ten lifts inside. I, I have mine, I have eight. I have two bays, but I have eight lifts. So all these things gotta be taken into consideration.
So can I-
And if we could fine tune it, like Veronica's saying, that'd be great.
Can I make a suggestion that we could, can we put this on the agenda, or something? Because it's probably not gonna make it for this town meeting, but maybe we should schedule to have discussions at the end of our shorter meetings, so that we could talk about some of the issues?
Of course.
Yeah, we could, um, Ken, would you ask Sonya tomorrow to just put it on the agenda for next and every subsequent meeting until we say we surrender? That we'll talk about this stuff each, at the end of every meeting?
Do you wanna set some goals about what you wanna do for zoning at this point, or do you wanna just have that discussion first and decide what your priorities are for changing?
I personally, right now, would like to recommend that we get tomorrow to the planning board, for them to consider changing the parking spaces for garages, just change the word, just add one word, and that would be minimum, so that the number of places per garage would be a minimum of two per bay.
That's what the table says now.
If it says a minimum, that doesn't mean that they've, so they've, they, but there's no maximum on what to grant a special permit can be required. And if we require, as a granting authority, four or five per bay, then they get into site plan review. That's just, if that's what it's-
But it's the only site plan review if the table says that they have, that require ten spaces. If you require ten spaces, that's not the table, so they don't have to do site plan review, but you could require that as part of the special permit.
I think it needs to be more specific, because we don't wanna, like, tonight, I feel bad that this person came before us. If there's, if the building department had, had told him off the bat, "You need X, Y, Z for this, for parking," they would already have had it.
They've met X, Y, and Z, they've met our written requirements.
Right, right, so it needs to, rather than saying minimum, it needs to say one.
Yeah, he says it already does. So we need, then, then I think that we need a minimum of four parking spaces per bay.
Per lift?
Per bay or per lift?
Per bay.
Bay or lift, additional.
Lifts or bay is how I raise it right now, yeah.
Yeah, per, yeah. Or spaces, so, so, 'cause that, those build, that building's big, and even, they only showed one car in each. I was looking at it, and I don't remember, we can't talk about specifics, never mind.
Not, not that-
Depending on how big a building is, if it can fit more cars in it, it shouldn't be considered one bay, because it has one door, like Nazee said.
Well, one bay or slash lift.
It says, in the article, it says, "Lift first or bay."
So, if it's a lift, it's-
Per.
It just says two, and I didn't, when I'm, I-
Okay.
I didn't see minimum or maximum.
But I think, I think if we changed it to four spaces per lift bay, it would be more realistic, because, gee whiz, if you're gonna drop your car off for an oil change, how long's it take to do an oil change? They take it in, they change the oil, and they put it out in the parking lot.
Yeah, and a couple of employees.
Customer comes back when they want, not when they're, you know, the appointment might have been for nine o'clock, but they may not come get it till after work at five.
So, I'm looking at nine twenty-one of our new zoning bylaws, and it says motor vehicle repair, it says two per lift or bay.
Yeah.
Doesn't say minimum, doesn't say maximum, doesn't say-
What does the lead-in to that table say?
What's that, sir?
What does the heading on the table say?
Minimum requirements.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry about that, sir, yep.
So, that's why I'm suggesting that we change, we suggest to the planning board that that, that two be changed to a four. It's a start. If it's too little, we can, next time, we can say, "Change it to a six."
And then we review the rest of the-
But at least get that, that, at least get something, you know, we've identified a, a weak spot in the bylaw, and to just-
I'll bring this up with the planning board on the thirteenth then, on the next meeting.
Do it written in a formal, formal, form, from the board, and a vote or anything, or can you-
Yeah, vote on it now to, to pass that.
Okay, who makes a motion that we change four to, for two to four, or number of cars per bay lift?
I'll make a motion.
Who seconds it?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Naz?
Aye, aye.
You could be unanimous, the board unanimously?
Plus employees, I would suggest plus employees. You gotta figure out each lift is one employee.
Four spaces per bay?
That's a car.
Four spaces per bay, and you wanna, and you wanna, and one space per employee?
Plus one per bay. Yes, each lift an employee.
They messed them up with, but they are, their employees park in a different lot.
Yeah, they take up almost.
Ask them to park their own cars, never mind the amount of cars that are wrapping around and.
So we want to prevent this.
Well, he's lucky, because he has that lot next door that he's conveyed to or got permission to park on that. But I mean, if it wasn't there, he'd be in trouble.
Maybe we need to change my four to a five and provide for the one employee per bay.
Well, how many employees?
You agree, Naz?
Plus one employee per lift.
Yes, I agree.
Let's change my four to a five.
And then they have the office, that's office people. I mean, are they all the same people, or is that?
Some, some places don't have anybody in the office.
That's true.
I'm just asking if that's something that we should.
Well, I, I suggest we try, let's change it to five and see how that goes. And if we, if we continue to see that being inadequate, then if we can get that one in for this meeting, then we got the fall to change the five to a six or a seven. That's, so I wanna, I wanna.
Keep raising it up.
Keep raising it, yeah. Higher, higher.
It's always, it's always, it's, if somebody can really and truly prove in somewhere else, doing business like per appointment or certain repair, that, let's say you install a handicap chair and a van that takes appointment, and it really, it is legit by appointment, we could always give a variance from five to three.
That's right.
And also, it's also, it doesn't mean if it's five, if we find it detrimental to the neighborhood and they provide 10 spaces per bay, if it's detrimental, that's the job of the board to not grant it. It doesn't mean if the by, that's why we there. If the bylaw says, oh, yes, you have to give it. Now, it goes to be challenging court, that's a different story. But if we think it's detrimental, it's detrimental, we don't have to give it.
I'm, I think for a guy that's up at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, you're pretty sharp.
Four, 4:20, 4:20.
So you didn't even have to go to bed now, you're up, you're ready, up early for tomorrow, for today.
Yeah, going skiing tomorrow, so.
Going skiing tomorrow, so.
So we voted on and approved four. I think what Nazee said actually just made me think, because we still do have the option to require more if we think it's detrimental, but if we set the bar at five, then we have to grant a variance, which, I don't know.
No, we don't.
If we want to give somebody less.
Yeah, but if we set it at five and they got two bays, they're automatically in site plan review, and we don't have any problems that we're familiar with already.
There you go. And if, like I said, somebody come, say they install, for instance, like people with DUI, they installed the blow test, or, like I said, those are really in appointment, and you know by appointment, they drop the car off, and they say, the guy say, listen, I can only do two cars a day. So we say, it's legit, we'll give him a variance for two cars, because it's legit, he can only do two cars a day.
Or we write that into the law if it's a by and appointment.
That will be our discretion, no, that will be a variance, it'll be up to us as a board, based on our discretion.
But what's, what's to stop somebody from pulling in, seeing the building and wanting to ask a question? I mean, you're not gonna tell me that's, you know, you're not gonna have accidental, even if it is by appointment, you're still gonna have traffic.
Yeah, right.
Absolutely, absolutely, Richard. But I'm saying, it's always, if we want a lower and it's legit, we can always grant the variance, so let's go to the high number, and we'll see, we'll go from there. I mean, if we don't say three, we say four.
I agree.
Do you want to revote? Do you want to revote for five, or do we can all just nod our head and say, make it a five instead of a four?
I vote, yeah, I'll make a motion to make it a five parking requirement.